Yeah.
All right, we're gonna call to order the committee of the whole meeting for August twentieth, twenty twenty four. Can you call the role for us, please?
Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu. Commissioner Gissler. Vice Chair Pro Tem Pepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Chair Ray. Commissioner Strips.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Commissioner DeLu is running a little late. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment time. This is the time when anyone may address the board on any topic. If you would like to address the board, please come to the podium. Please state your name and tell us where you're from. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Your time is displayed and once your three minutes are up, your time to speak is finished. This is a time to provide input in a professional respectful manner. Are there any members of the public who wish to make public comment? Everybody looks so excited. All right, I don't see any hands raised online. All right, so we'll move right on into our presentation from the Health Officer and Director Jim Rutherford.
Thank you. Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Dina. Uh, thank you. Uh, appreciate the opportunity commissioners to come and present to you our annual report for two thousand and twenty-three. And you have a short PowerPoint presentation here. Hopefully you all got a copy of our annual report. I apologize it was a little too robust to send out electronically, so we did hand deliver these copies. I tell you this report just gets better every year, so very pleased with my staff in terms of the work that they put into this. I'll start out with our team. Obviously, I'm Jim Rutherford, Health Officer. I've been here for about nine years for the my second time here. Medical Officer is Dr. Nettleton. Hopefully all all of you had a chance to meet our wonderful and very talented medical officer, Dr. Dr. Nettleton. He's, uh, for those of you don't know, Dr. Nettleton is a contract employee. We share him with WMed, um, who is his employer, but he also provides medical office service services for Calhoun County. And I tell you in the thirty-five years that I've been in public health, this is one of the greatest partnerships that we've had. And it's it's really a great model that that isn't really utilized very awfully in the state of Michigan, but it's paid dividends for us. Uh, in addition, we oversee the medical examiner. You're fortunate to have Dr. Hansma here who will provide his update for an annual report. And then Deb Lenz is my deputy health officer. And then when you get a chance, I know I've only got ten minutes, take a look at some of the other familiar faces that that you've worked with over the years within community services and the health services. Next slide, Dino. So then, um, financial information. We have approximately in two thousand and twenty-three, just over a twenty-two million dollar budget. Uh, with the addition of the oversight of the medical examiner, that's another eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. The breakdown on the left side of the slide represents the two thousand and twenty-three revenue streams by source. And the purple, uh, pie, you can see that the the overall budget that we receive for state and federal grants is pretty significant. It's about forty-five percent of our overall budget, um, representing about ten million dollars annually. The dark blue is next, and that's the, um, the county general funds, which obviously were extremely appreciative to the commissioners for and their continued support. This makes up about twenty-five percent of our budget, consisting of about five point four million dollars. Orange is the triple A senior millage, which makes up about sixteen percent of our budget totaling three point six million dollars. Red is fees, uh, fees that we that we receive, which are just over eight point or one point eight million dollars, representing eight percent of our budget. Light blue is donations Medicaid based reimbursement other that represents about two hundred and twenty or generates just around a million dollars. And then green is our Medicaid and commercial reinsure or reimbursements, which generates just under three hundred thousand dollars. The expenses by divisions, dark blue and orange combined on the right side is area agency on aging, which represents about thirty percent of our expenditures. Green is our clinical services, which is twenty-eight percent of our budget expenditures. Purple environmental health, household hazardous waste in our lab, representing sixteen percent of our budget. Red is maternal and child health, which is fifteen percent of our budget. Light blue is administration, which is about nine percent of our budget. And the lightest blue is our veterans program, which is two percent of our overall expenditures. Next slide, Dino. There we go. So, uh, some of the highlights that I wanted to real quickly go over for two thousand and twenty-three, obviously another busy year for us coming out of of COVID. The, uh, public health leaders, the first picture on the left represents a partnership with Western Michigan University that culminated in public health leaders from around the world, visiting the Kalamazoo County Health and Community Services Department. The center picture represents an award that my staff and I received from K Risa, recognizing our support, unwavering support for students and schools throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. We're fortunate to have Michigan Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist stop by to support our veterans program. Next slide. Uh, on the left of this of this slide is a picture of us with the, uh, Dr. Tony Nagian, uh, who visited Kalamazoo County to talk about the NHANES program that that we helped facilitate to discuss the program, which is the National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey that was that was started in two thousand and twenty-three. We went through an accreditation review, and I'll tell you historically, Kalamazoo County was the first county public health department in the state of Michigan to go through accreditation. Um, and, uh, they started with us for a reason, I believe. I wasn't here at the time, but I I do believe that they started with us for for a good reason. Um, we're now on our eighth cycle, and this is done every three years. Uh, the final picture on the right is our day at the Capitol, um, where we sat down with, uh, Representative Morris, as well as Representative Rogers, um, and talked about public health. Uh, next slide. So we do have, we're fortunate to have three advisory councils. I don't have a board of health, so these are nice to have these advisory councils. I have one that's called, uh, the Environmental Health Advisory Council, or EHAC for short. This is the informed body that is a sounding board for policy matters affecting all of our environmental health services. Uh, the next one is our Veterans Affairs Committee, um, another great, great council committee that, uh, provides even more than just advisory, their decision-making in some regards as it relates to veterans, uh, funding. And then finally, our OSAC is the Older Adult Services Advisory Council, and this is our advisory council for triple A. A lot of great volunteers, um, provide a lot of input on that committee. Two internal committees that I'm extremely proud of are oldest is the outbreak response team. Um, this is made up of epidemiologists, this is made up of our our clinical nurses, our environmental health staff. Whenever we have an outbreak, this is the team that 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 gets together and figures out what we need to do moving forward. That also has a lot of representation from the community as well to be met. Our health systems, both of our health systems, um, our our medical examiner's office and such. And then, uh, finally, the the we have an internal DEI committee, which has been in place for about two and a half years. This coincides with the county's DEI, um, work, and, um, it's allowed us to do some things internally that, um, we're very proud of. One of the things I'll talk about at the end of this presentation. Next slide, Dino. Um, some of the programs that we provide specifically, the area agency on aging program, which provides the senior millage, the choice for independent living program, healthy living programs. Many of you are familiar with our environmental health programs, the food inspections, the household hazardous waste facility, uh, the laboratory services, maternal and child health, which oversees our nurse family partnership, home visitation programs, fatherhood program, healthy babies, healthy start. Our personal health program is our internal clinic, the family planning clinic, immunizations, travel clinic, women and children program, and then the CD program. Veteran Service Office, uh, federal benefits application, soldiers and soldiers relief, burial benefits, and then operations is our public information office, our emergency preparedness coordinator, as well as the oversight of our barrel and pure program. Next slide. So, uh, I just honing in on a couple of additional information, um, pieces of information here regarding triple A. Again, a navigation program. The ultimate objective, um, is providing service for our senior population, and then ultimately trying to keep, um, the aged population from having to go into long-term care facilities. So the goal of most people, um, is to try to stay at home as long as possible, and that program really endeavors to be able to accomplish that. One of the things I wanted to draw out of of this is by two thousand and twenty-nine, nearly twenty-five percent of the residents in Kalamazoo County will be over the age of sixty. The triple A creates a system of home community-based services to maximize independence and dignity. And keep this in mind, the baby boomers of which I'm one of the last of of that generation ends in nineteen sixty-four. So all of the baby boomers are in their sixties, seventies, and some are rapidly approaching their eighties. Next is Gen X, and and Gen X is right behind. So that that begins, uh, Gen X, I think, starts turning into sixty-year-olds in the next couple of years. So, uh, the 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 senior population is, I know, I know, we shake our head, no, no, it's not me, but it is, it's all of us. It's better than the alternative. Uh, next is the environmental health division. Again, food facilities, we inspect thousands of restaurants on an annual basis, all the food facilities, schools and such. We're fortunate to have one of the few household hazardous waste, uh, facilities in the state of Michigan. Really excited about the conversation about, you know, looking at a new facility in the future. Laboratory, we're one of only four local public health departments that are have our own laboratory. That's huge. That's significant. Paid great dividends throughout the COVID, um, years, and it's just a gold star for us to have that. Uh, land waste, land and water and wastewater, we still do a lot of soil borings for residential, uh, considerations for housing, designing septic systems, looking at water issues. We have obviously a lot of challenges in Kalamazoo County as it relates to our groundwater, because we have a lot of, you know, we have some contaminated sites, like just about every county in the country. Uh, maternal and child health, our breast and surgery for cancer control program, breast and cervical cancer control program, um, healthy babies, uh, and I talked about some of those other programs. Um, and this program really strives to offer women and their families the overall goal of assisting with their families and leading independent, meaningful and dignified lives within our community. Personal health division, these are the nurses that that work within our clinics, our our childhood lead poisoning prevention program, our CD communicable disease program, hearing and vision, getting kids immunized, working with our new family planning clinic, uh, STI sexually transmitted infections and HIV testing and counseling. Next slide. And then our veteran service office, which in two thousand and twenty-three, the veteran service office awarded sixty thousand, six hundred and forty-four in housing and utilities assistance, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and food vouchers, managed two hundred and seventy-seven compensation claims and a hundred and forty-two pension claims. So got a great, great program, um, and very pleased that, uh, we're we're working off of a solid millage. Uh, operations, again, our public information office, our emergency preparedness, and then we've like we recognized our volunteers a couple of months ago. Very fortunate to have a great robust amount of volunteers. Just a couple of parting snapshots here on the next slide. Um, we do, uh, obviously the senior expo top left, Don Saldia there. We do a caregiver day. Um, we've really tried to increase our outreach, um, at getting kids vaccinated. So we do a fall theme flu clinic. Some of I've seen some of the commissioners at some of of these. Um, we do a lot on social media and marketing. We purchased through a a grant that we received with COVID funds a couple of years ago, we were able to purchase a mobile unit. So hopefully you've been able to see that out in the community. And then, uh, again, working with the veteran of the year, a program through the veterans programs. So my final slide is what's on the horizon. And, uh, you know, I've talked, hopefully you're all up to speed with where we're at with the school-based health center, Loy Norax. That is under construction. We should be ready to go, even though we're a couple of weeks behind the the beginning of the school year, but we're waiting for a big HVAC, uh, system to be installed on the roof. But that is underway. Very excited about that. We've already gone in and done a hundred sports physicals, uh, over the past couple of weeks. So, uh, we came in and did those no charge, because we just want to get people familiar with with our our physician's assistant and our, uh, MSW in the program. We just hired the medical assistant in as well. One of the things I talked about with our DEI committee real quickly, I know I'm beyond my time here. Albert White Memorial, uh, what we're working on very early in the conversations. For those of you that don't know, Albert White was an African-American builder that lived in Kalamazoo from eighteen seventy until his death in nineteen thirty. Um, he and his men built a a number of buildings, well-known buildings in Kalamazoo, beautiful buildings. Fortunately, one of those buildings is three eleven Alcott Street, which is our building. He built that building at a time when it was difficult for a black man to to do something like that. Employed fifty employees. So we're working alongside Western Michigan University to talk to them about the feasibility of some type of memorial for for Mr. White. So I'm got my DEI committee working on that. Very excited. He's got legacy, uh, relatives in the area. Uh, and we had an initial meeting. Obviously, we won't do anything without administration and and the board of commissioners being involved as that as well. Uh, excited about the discussions on the HHW facility. Looking at, you know, we know that we struggle with outreach in some of the outlying parts of the community, particularly with the veterans program and the triple A program. So what we've done with the mobile unit in the clinic, I'd like to try to replicate that with with those two programs that we can be doing. You know, clinics and parking lots, clinics at at VFW halls, things like that. Uh, Healthy Homes Program, we're gonna look at a HUD grant in two thousand and twenty-five, so we can do a little bit more with lead than what we've done in the past. And then we know that what's coming in two thousand and twenty-five is additional funding for hearing and vision. So that'll help ramp up some of the work that we currently do with that. And then finally, there's some revenue that's being projected for a kindergarten oral health program, so excited about that as well. I apologize if I've gone over, but I it's hard to condense this all down in ten minutes. Any questions?
Thank you, Director Rutherford. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Stripes?
Thank you, Chair. No questions for the director, but I just want to lift up praises for HCS for your leadership, uh, here in the county over the last number of years and in so many facets. And we do great programming at Health and Community Services, and I want to thank you for that. It's a beautiful report. I look forward to sharing all of this information with constituents in the community and look forward to supporting your work as we go forward. Thank you.
Director.
Um, yeah, I'd like to echo my colleague sentiments. Thank you for for what you do in that office. It's truly, it's one of the shot better, uh, Health and Community Services in the in the state as far as county-led facilities. Um, I had a question on, um, your the the budget information.
I knew, I knew you would.
Obviously. Uh, my question is the, you know, the fifty or forty-five percent, close to fifty percent, forty-five percent of your money that comes in from state and federal grants. Um, is that how many, if you'd have to guess, what percentage of that is kind of a reoccurring sort of a grant that you just sort of perfunctory apply for, and how much of it is actively seeking out, uh, new funding sources?
Well, I I really would be out there on a limb, but I would say probably half of that is what we would consider the the traditional mandated public health services, so immunizations. There's nine mandated services that that we have to, every local public health department, in accordance with the public health, have to do those nine mandated services. We do a lot more than that, because we address the the community health indicators that we've kind of had for a long time. We know we've got a pretty high rate of infant mortality, particularly for black babies versus white babies. We know we've got a pretty high rate of sexually transmitted infections and HIV in Kalamazoo County. So, you know, those are things that we continue to work on. We have a significant HUD grant that really allows for a lot of that home visitation work. I tell you, if you look at the the data surrounding infant mortality, when when a mom or a family is involved with a home visitation program, such as nurse family partnership, we just don't have, and you know, infant mortality, if they can go through those comprehensive programs, we're very successful in those.
And I think you got to the crux of my question, um, but, um, sort of kind of hitting the getting more to the the point of it. Would we be able to get more money if we had more people that were pursuing that as far as grant writers? Or, um, would we be able to get a larger piece of of the state and federal grand dollars if we more actively pursued it?
Oh, it certainly wouldn't hurt. You know, we typically, uh, Dublens, my deputy, does a lot of our grant writing. We have a very talented epidemiologist, Kim Cutsco, that helps with that, but we don't have as designated grant writer. So, you know, and I've talked to administration and Lindy in the past in terms of, you know, what is the value of us maybe sharing or having that that capacity? I think that that would be very advantageous. The other part of it, too, is I think that sometimes we miss the boat. I don't think so much anymore, but historically, sometimes we miss the boat on Medicaid and and Medicare reimbursements, private insurance reimbursements. The stuff that FQHCs do very, very well, local public health is kind of languished. And, and, you know, we've worked with Ryan and his people, and, you know, it's it's a it's a new day in terms of opportunity, I I do believe.
I certainly agree with your assessment of the needs of this community. I, you know, as we we and our colleagues sit up here, we've got to try to rack our brains together and come up with, you know, ways to get more resources and more revenue, because, you know, you are, as I stated earlier, one of the best in the state. But that's no reason that we can't, you know, every day try to get a little bit better.
Agreed, agreed, and we're getting bigger and bigger, so we're looking at a bigger population over here.
And if there's any way that we as commissioners can help you in that endeavor, please feel free to ask.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Um, the first question, it's my understanding that there's a FEMA review team that exists. Um, the first question, it's my understanding that there's a FEMA review team that exists. Does that exist out of the maternal child health division or the medical examiner's office?
It is contracted through Western Michigan University. We, we have a lot of participation in it, but the actual operation of that has always been contracted or since I've been here, before I got here, that was contracted through Western Michigan University.
Okay. So are there like annual reports? If so, how can we access that information?
Yes, FEMA provides a fetal infant mortality, provides an annual report, and those are really the, the points that, that entities like Cradle will really kind of point their, their stars towards or their, their compasses towards, because that's really relevant information in terms of, you know, how are babies dying? What are the conditions? You know, what are the, what are the prenatal situations that, that need to be taken into consideration? So those are very important reports and if, if those haven't been shared, then, then I'll really work on assuring that those become available immediately and make sure that that, and that's something, if you want a report, we can, we can arrange for that to happen as well.
Well, I'd like to see a report. And then just one question.
But if you'd like to see a presentation, we can arrange for that as well.
Oh, sure. They all look excited for another report, I mean, presentation. So I heard you say that connecting to home visitation program reduces infant mortality rates. Where do we see the data that supports that?
It's, it's through our epidemiologists, we can, I can follow up and show you, you know, that's, that's information that's readily shared through Cradle meetings on a regular basis. But, you know, that, that much, the rates are significantly lower when, when a mom, a first time mom goes through a twenty-four month long Nurse Family Partnership program, that's really a significant amount of time invested. And at the end of that process, you know, they're, they're a much better position to be able, obviously, we get them early on, but it's a long drawn out process. And our nurses have a caseload of approximately twenty-five families on, on a, on a regular basis. So women are rotating in and out of that program.
Okay.
But I can, Chair Ray, I can provide you some, some data from our epidemiologist relative to that information.
That'd be awesome. I work for Cradle, I never see data. And we're always like, where's the data, where's the data?
I know.
So thank you so much for the presentation.
Yep.
And this book is very detailed, a lot of information. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night. All right. Next up, we have the Medical Examiner twenty twenty-three angle report.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Patrick Hansma, I'm your medical examiner. I know for many years you've been used to seeing Dr. Joyce DeYoung stand here and it has been my pleasure and privilege to serve in this capacity since she has moved on to Michigan State as the dean of the osteopathic college there. The annual report, I believe you all have in hard copy in front of you, and this also is available on our website if you want to review it in that format at any given point, but you have a paper copy and it is alphabetized by county, which puts Kalamazoo on page thirty-five. At the start of the report are some preliminary pages about the medical examiner's office, name accreditation, state statute that governs our functions, things of that nature. But the data for Kalamazoo County begins on page thirty-five and that first page there is led by a large table on the right-hand column, you see two thousand twenty-three. So that is all the, the numbers going down that column for the relevant year. And in summary, honestly, I could just wrap this all up in one sentence, it's a return towards pre-COVID numbers. That's what we're seeing in all of our counties, Kalamazoo as well. On the whole, not everything follows the trend exactly, but on the whole, we are largely seeing a return to pre-COVID numbers. Total mortality, number of cases, being autopsied, things of that nature. If you look down across the rows, you'll get to eventually, for example, the number fourteen, looking down that right column, if you just scan down, you'll find fourteen and you see that's the number of limited autopsies. And then right below it is the number one hundred, which is the number of external examinations. These numbers are up compared to pre-COVID numbers. I believe that may be because we brought a CT scanner on at WMed in the Department of Pathology and so cases that may have previously been autopsied might be converting to CT now. That CT showed up mere months after I joined the Department of Pathology. So I don't have the historic frame of reference to know with certainty that that's what did it. But in retrospect, I think some cases that may have previously been autopsied were now converted over to being able to assess radiographically. And so there is some shift where things are not following the pre-COVID numbers exactly, but that, that is still by and away the trend. Below that first table, we see cremation permit authorizations. We investigate and sign off to approve cremations in the counties, you know, where we serve as the medical examiner and cremation is by and away now the preferred means of disposition. And so the number of cremation permits that our forensic pathologists are handling every day continues to rise. Onto page thirty-six, you see matters of death reported and it is itemized accident, or excuse me, natural accident, suicide, homicide and indeterminate. And the one number that is strikingly down compared to the others, you see down that right-hand column in two thousand twenty-three, you'll see the number thirty-five, you scan across that suicides. So two thousand twenty-three saw the lowest number of suicides in Kalamazoo County in ten years. So that is encouraging, absolutely encouraging. I don't know the cause, I'm not in a position to know the cause, but we're glad regardless. So that is good. Deaths reported by age, we just heard about the high rate of infant mortality. From a medical examiner perspective, fortunately, that number is still small. So in that table, if you look down at the very bottom row, so now two thousand twenty-three is going across the bottom row, all the way in that bottom left corner, deaths less than one in two thousand twenty-three, there's only four. So the high rate of infant mortality that we just heard about may be overly represented by medically attended natural deaths and therefore not reported to the medical examiner because it's not required by statute. So it's not that four is an insignificant number, every one of these lives is precious and every one of these deaths matters, but the impact on a higher infant mortality rate in any given county so far does not show a drastic impact on the medical examiner's office. It was only four cases that we had to handle in two thousand twenty-three. And then scanning across that row, you see that by and away, the majority of deaths are going to be the elderly population. That is impacting the medical examiner's office. The population is aging. We just heard that Gen X is entering their sixties, it's better than the alternative. I am the alternative. And so we feel the weight of that. The following page, page thirty-seven is the breakdown of the pediatric deaths and it kind of runs the gamut of possibilities from natural deaths to accidents to even more so unfortunate homicides. Excuse me. But I'll leave you to look through that at your leisure, the details of it. And then below that though, there is a table at the bottom of thirty-seven that of the infant live births where the ME certified the death, all of them were autopsied. And so they are certified with a high degree of confidence because of that. Thirty-eight gives accidental deaths by mechanism. It's the usual suspects looking down page, or I'm sorry, the right column, the two thousand twenty-three column, motor vehicle collisions, drug-related fatalities and falls are your big numbers, fall a hundred and two. These are largely ground level falls of the elderly where your octogenarian grandma sustains a fall in her home and fractures her hip and never recovers. These are not falls from heights, we're not the topography of say Cleveland where I trained, where we had a lot of jumpers falling, you know, down Appalachia foothills type of thing. Then below that, drug deaths, the popular topic in everybody's mind that we all despise but can't stop talking about is drug deaths. Two thousand twenty-three, again, down the right-hand column, the vast majority of them are accidental deaths, they are certified so by convention. Drug deaths are considered accidents in the course of recreational substance use. You just, you didn't mean to die, you meant to get high, but this time you died. So it's a conventional assertion that those are accidental deaths and you can see that sixty-seven of the total number there involved opioids, which is seventy-seven percent of them. So opioids are quite prevalent. In point of fact, on the street, methamphetamine and fentanyl are now completely missable. If you buy methamphetamine, it has fentanyl in it. If you buy fentanyl, it has methamphetamine in it. So opioids are everywhere. That takes us over to page thirty-nine where we see suicides. We mentioned it was down and that is wonderful. At the top of page thirty-nine is the chart and below it graphically showing the distribution of males versus females, males outnumbering females on average four to one across our counties and Kalamazoo is no different. Fortunately, there were no pediatric suicides in two thousand twenty-three, looking across that bottom row, you'll see a zero right in the center. So that is also wonderful. Sad though, all the adult suicides are, it is also at least encouraging that there are no pediatric suicides. I cannot say that for every county that I'm giving a report to for two thousand twenty-three. We have seen pediatric suicides in our jurisdiction, fortunately not here. Over to page forty, suicide by mechanism. Now you're reading down that right column again for two thousand twenty-three and again, it's the usual players of firearms and hanging as well as drug intoxication. I mentioned before, drug intoxications are by convention accident unless there is some indication that there was an intent to harm oneself or to frankly die. So then leave the last page, oh, that was the last page, I thought we had one more. So that, those are the numbers. You know, that's, that's kind of the boring side of it. The, the more interpersonal human side is that my goal, which I believe I stated to you when I stood before you taking on the role of the medical examiner by your appointment in Joyce's stead, is that I wanted a seamless transition, that you should feel no drastic change and that, you know, as I've segwayed into this role, that we will now make gradual changes, looking for opportunities to always improve. I believe that WMed is performing most excellently, but again, why settle for that? And we will always explore ways to do better, but it is my hope that you have felt nothing different from the excellent service we provided under your previous medical examiner to hopefully excellent service under me. And if you have anything to say to the contrary, I can take it. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you. Commissioner Pottin?
Thank you. Very good report, lengthy as it always is. It does appear that even going through most of the other counties, it looks like our, our death rate has kind of dropped this year compared to last year and the year before. Do you see this as a trend? Maybe we're heading down a path of maybe going down the breakside of the hill for a change?
It's a great question and you are certainly not the first to ask that. Other commissioners and other counties have as well, and I don't know. It's too early to tell if we are going to see a return to pre-COVID numbers and then the gradual upslope that we were seeing before that, or if it's going to continue downward or stabilize, it's not possible to know yet.
Not seen anything at this point in time this year.
Correct. Thank you.
Commissioners? Seen nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Discover Kalamazoo Marketing Campaign Presentation by Jane Goode.
It is a pleasure to be with you here today and I am excited to share with you our marketing campaign. And again, I'd love to thank Vice Chair Taylor and Vice Chair Proton Hepler for being with us when we announced this campaign to the media. So thank you again. I'm going to give a little bit more background than I have done before because this has actually been about a two and a half year process to get to where we are today. And I'm going to communicate three things today. The first is, you know, within that campaign, what are we trying to say? That's what we call our positioning or we know what we're communicating. I'll talk to you specifically about the ad campaign because that's how we are sharing, you know, that content across with the potential visitors to Kalamazoo County. And then finally, where, where we're communicating our media plan. So that is our objective. And just as a reminder, most visitors to Kalamazoo County are leisure visitors. So obviously my team works very hard to bring in sports and meetings events, but most people are here for about a four-hour drive market for a casual road trip. And then the most common reason there is to see friends and family, but people can come, you know, Kalamazoo County for, for any reason. So this is what we call our greenhouse, our strategy for growth, which I shared with you at the end of last year. And this is really about that number one strategy, which is leveraging our geography to win that casual road tripper and all the things that we're doing underneath that. So this is really how we're executing that strategy and it has been a long time coming because we wanted to do it right. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So the objective of this campaign ultimately, and this is, you know, always our north star is to increase visitor spending because visitor spending here in Kalamazoo County sustains the amenities that Kalamazoo County residents can enjoy as well as creating business opportunities and supporting almost nine percent of county jobs. So that's really the objective here. Our target is adults within our four-hour drive market and what we want to accomplish is convince people to either make Kalamazoo the destination for their trip or to stop by. We know there is a lot of traffic from Detroit and Chicago, east and west and, you know, north, south, and we don't even, we don't need them to make this their destination. We're happy to have them, you know, to stop by on their way, on their way through, but again, frequenting those restaurants. So against those objectives then, what we are trying to communicate, if you could go to the next slide, please. We're good. We worked with, we put a group together because we know that when we were trying to figure out what to say, it shouldn't, we knew it shouldn't just be Discover Kalamazoo deciding what to say about Kalamazoo County, that we need to speak with a collective voice, both, you know, to residents and visitors. And therefore, it's not just the Convention of Visitors Bureau, but we spoke with the county of Kalamazoo, the city of Kalamazoo. We had Western Michigan University on our task force as well as South of Michigan first. So we got a coalition together to figure out what is it that we collectively, you know, want to say about our county. We engaged an agency called Consumer Dynamics and through this process, they spoke to three hundred and forty-two total respondents, mostly within the county, but also some potential visitors outside the county to really get a solid mix of people to figure out like, what is it? What is it that makes Kalamazoo County special? And we were looking for something that was unique, so that something about Kalamazoo County that's, you know, unique to us, that is believable. So it has to be true as well and then finally motivating. And we did a lot of qualitative interviews and ultimately we did a quantitative survey. If you could go to the next slide, please. These are, this is just a sampling of the groups that were involved in all of our outreach to figure out, you know, what is it that we want to say about Kalamazoo County? And if you could go on to the next slide, please. This is going to be hard to see, but this is actually the participants in our quantitative survey. So we, we then, once we had ideas of territories of what we could say, we wanted to make sure that we had the full representation of Kalamazoo County when we were speaking to residents to make sure that it worked for all of Kalamazoo County. We ended up having in our quantitative survey, someone from every single township and village within the county. So we have full representation geographically. And then if you could go to the next slide, you'll also see kind of demographically, we wanted to make sure that we had full representation. So amongst this group of people, we tested a variety of, of positionings, both qualitatively and then finally quantitatively. And on the next slide, you can see, you know, this is very much kind of the, this is the, this is the sausage making, I guess, as you will. This is what we call our brand pyramid. So this is the essence of what we knew we wanted to communicate to our, the people, the potential visitors as well as for other purposes, potentially residents. And you might've heard me say in previous meetings, and I think I've shown you a video before, kind of headline of cool, comfortable Kalamazoo, but that, you know, Kalamazoo is this very unique place with this functional benefit of all these attractions and all these wonderful things to do, that emotional benefit of how you feel when you're here, you know, which is welcome. And then finally, the RTB, that stands for Reasons to Believe, the things that we knew we needed to say to visitors and residents to make them, you know, you know, believe in those benefits. And if you could go to the next slide, you know, you'll have seen some very specific mentions of attractions, for example. That was just to get the flavor across. Again, RTB stands for Reasons to Believe, you know, the original RTB, if you can go for a hike in the morning and then have, you know, have a beer at Bell's Brewery, catch a show at the state theater, those are just examples of specific attractions, but we know when we were doing our testing that we can swap out, you know, other attractions, any kind of trip. catch a show at the State Theater. Those are just examples of specific attractions. But we know when we were doing our testing that we can swap out, you know, other attractions, any kind of trip worthy kind of attraction. So it's actually a very kind of modular positioning. And so that was, that was the testing. And if you could go, this is, this is the results. So first I'm going to show you the, the results of testing that concept with, with potential visitors. And the next slide, I'll show you residents. So, you know, the great news is that when we exposed this concept to potential visitors versus people we did not expose it to or brief, you know, before and after, that they had an increased likelihood to visit. And we also tested it against the closest thing we had for a previous campaign that we were aware of in Kalamazoo County was, yes, there really is a Kalamazoo. And so we knew that whatever we were going to do had to outperform that concept of, yes, there really is a Kalamazoo. And so you can see that it, the, this, this other concept that we're, the headline is cool, comfortable Kalamazoo, significantly outperformed that concept of, yes, there really is a Kalamazoo. Which I think when you think about it, it shouldn't be too much of a surprise because while it is unique and, and believable that, yes, there really is a Kalamazoo, it's not very motivating. You know, why do, yes, yes, I believe you that there is a Kalamazoo, but why does that make you want to come visit? And then on the next slide, you can see the performance with residents. And when hearing this description of Kalamazoo County, you know, we felt great that it really had people feel pride in Kalamazoo County. And it makes them feel positive about the future of Kalamazoo County. So we really felt like in terms of what we wanted to say, we were onto something there. So then we proceeded to the next step, which was the fun part, which is, okay, how do we, how do we actually communicate this in a way that works with consumers and those, the out of town residents? So that's the next part, which is how, how we are communicating it. And that is now the delightful part of it. And again, we used a quantitative testing methodology to make sure that what we were doing was right. I come to Discover Kalamazoo after having been fortunate enough decades of marketing experience at Johnson and Johnson and the Kellag Company and was able to benefit from that experience and really what is best practices of knowing, you know, you've got a great ad before you start spending money on making that ad and then, you know, putting media against it. So this is really a, this is the kind of best in class methodology. The first job of an ad is to get noticed, is to break through the clutter. That's what we call that ad recognition. Because an ad can be wonderfully persuasive, but if you don't see it in the first place, none of that matters. So that's the first job. That's the top of that funnel. The second job of an ad is to make sure that the person seeing the ad knows what brand it was for. Because again, if you see an ad and you recognize it and, you know, you thought it was for Grand Haven, but it was actually for South Haven, then South Haven's, you know, wasted their money or Fort Lauderdale or, you know, whatever that might be. And then lastly is to, is to be persuasive and actually, you know, get people to want, in this, in our case, want to visit us. So this methodology tests each of these. And if you could show the next slide, it uses basically a cluttered environment. And it has people scroll through, because most of our spend is going to be on digital platforms. So it has people, kind of forces them to scroll through examples of digital screens. And if you could just click through, Dina, the next two, you know, these are examples. They had to scroll through three different screens. And then after this, they were asked, what ads did you see? And then they were asked, you know, what brand was it for? And then lastly, you know, asked about, you know, motivation intent to visit. The benchmark for this methodology with the firm that we used is like the average ad we'll test it at a hundred, kind of the summary that adds the index of a hundred. And I'm delighted to share that our ad, the next slide you can see, actually had a brand, this, you know, kind of brand impact score of a hundred and twenty one, which is above average. And that is outstanding, you know, for an ad first, first time out. We tested two ads, one passed, one did not. So I'm only sharing with you, you know, the one that we're going with because it, because it passed. But that's a great score for first time out for a brand new campaign. When we haven't yet, you know, created those, you know, distinctive assets, distinctive brand assets that people are familiar with. So I don't know in the prior screens, what ads, you know, you may or may not have noticed, but there was an ad there for Panera, there was an ad for Kindle, there was an ad for Nissan. And all of those brands have invested for decades in distinctive brand assets that you can see it. My, you know, most previously before Discover Kalamazoo, one of the brands I was in charge of was Keebler Cookies. And Ernie the Elf is a great example of distinctive brand asset. If you see Ernie Keebler, you know, you know that you are seeing an ad for Keebler Cookies, right? And it, and it means that you can advertise much, much more efficiently because people notice it and they know what brand it's for. So our job is to create the equivalent of that for Kalamazoo County. And we think that we are onto something with this campaign. So we pretested it, we got a great score. And so now then it's like, okay, game on, let's, let's develop the ads. And I think if I'm not mistaken, the next slide is a video.
Get a fresh view in Kalamazoo. Walk a few steps, catch a show, and see a classic or two. Unwind, open up, try something new. Bike around, let it splash, and explore nature's beauty. Take the trails, ride a bike, let's relax and groove. It sure is, it's loud, there's so much to do. Find all this and more in Kalamazoo.
So as you can see, the, the concept is, you know, what rhymes with Kalamazoo? And bringing in all those elements from the positioning that we knew, you know, were very motivating, you know, unique, motivating for Kalamazoo County and put them in rhymes with Kalamazoo, using that very kind of distinctive asset, the, 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 almost sing songy kind of way, you know, people talk about, you know, refer to almost sounds like Dr. Seuss kind of rhyme. It's very memorable and you can't see that ad and think that it's for any destination other than Kalamazoo, right? It's, it's really leveraging what we think might be our most unique asset, which is our name. And if you could go to the next slide, please. I think you might need to hit escape. So that, what you just saw there was a, yeah, you could play from the slide you were just at, please. I'm sorry, go back up, apologies. Keep going. Okay, you're getting all the preview of the ad here. So sorry, Dina. Okay, the, what looks like slide twenty four, I guess, please? Or twenty one, I'm sorry, twenty one. I'm trying, I'm looking from the side there. There you go. If you could hit play, please, from there. You might need to go into, oh, there we go. So that's a social ad, yeah, a social video. We have learned that most people consume social media without the sound on, which is why we have that just with the subtitles and not the voiceover. Then, I'm sorry, slide twenty one, please, the previous slide. And this is a six second spot. So think of maybe before you watch an ad on YouTube is where you might see this. Thank you. And then if you could go to slide twenty three and now you could just go to full screen mode, there's no more videos. Okay, if you could go on the upper left where it says from current slide and just hit up right there, yeah, and then just go to next slide and click next again. Just click next, next slide. I like that ad. I've seen it plenty of times, but you all might, might ready move on. Okay, excellent. And then if you go from current slide here, I think that then the videos are done and we're all, we all set. And as we're waiting for this, so what, what I'm about to show are examples. So we have this campaign's digital ads. So like when you're browsing the web, either on your phone or on a desktop, the ads that you see there, social media ads. We're also doing out of home ads. So billboards in other places, out of home, typically billboard is the most common. And then you can see, we're really trying to leverage what we learned from the positioning and show the breadth of interests and attractions, trip worthy interests and attractions across Kalamazoo County. So see something new in Kalamazoo. Grab a craft brew in Kalamazoo. Bring the whole crew to Kalamazoo. This is one of the best performing ads. People love, love the dog in that ad and it, it does get a lot of engagement. Find the artist in you in Kalamazoo. Splash into the blue in Kalamazoo. We're so fortunate to have so many inland lakes. See something new in Kalamazoo. You know, we have, I'm just gathering data on how many live performances we have here in Kalamazoo County. I haven't even heard back from all of our partners and I'm at more than fifteen hundred annual live performances here in Kalamazoo County. And, you know, that's really a selling point for us. A table for two in Kalamazoo, you know, all of our fine dining. Stay a night or two in Kalamazoo. So fortunate to have great places to stay here, rally the crew again back to the performances. And then lastly is, you know, where we're communicating it. So I talked a little bit about our, about media plan. So if you could go to the next slide, please. Overall, we expect to reach fifteen million people in that three hundred mile drive radius of, you know, Kalamazoo County. And we don't spend money in Kalamazoo County on this campaign. This is really for people who are outside the county to come in. We expect to have forty five million impressions. So that's each time any one person sees the ad, it's an impression. And so far we are outperforming our projections. So we've spent about half of our money and we've reached eleven million people so far and on average twice per person for about, or three, three times, excuse me, for about thirty one million impressions. This, and you can see, I think on the previous slide, there was a chart kind of of our spending. As we are, we're having, so far we've had, you know, a solid year to date against our accommodations tax revenue budget, which that's really how Discover Kalamazoo is typically funded, is accommodations tax revenue. As we're exceeding our budget, we're continuing to invest in this campaign because we know that we're confident that the campaign will work and drive more visitation, which will drive more revenue for the future for us to continue to invest. We, up until through this year, we've been able to benefit from American Rescue Plan funds from the county. We had a one point three million dollar tax deficit and the county was kind enough to grant us five hundred thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan funds to fill that deficit from COVID. And a significant portion of that has been spent on this campaign, both in the development and then now we are spending really on the media. Unfortunately, next year we won't, that grant will have exhausted that grant as well as a couple of other grants that will really be on the accommodations tax revenue that we'll be relying for the future of the campaign. Thank you. Any, and thank you, Dina. And I'm sorry for a complicated presentation there. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Beautiful presentation. Love the fun part. My only recommendation is that you add some people of color in that, in those slides. You know, we're attracting Chicago, Detroit, all areas to come here. I did not see myself or my family reflected in, in those slides. And I think that's important as Kalamazoo grows, as we attract different populations to move here. And especially with a lot of the attractions being in District One, which is our heavy, peeviest populated area of people of color, black folks, indigenous and Hispanic. So that's my only recommendation that I would like to see moving forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for inviting us to participate. It's very exciting getting this moving in Kalamazoo or getting this moving for our state. So we make our community strong, it makes our state strong. So I think it's a good representation that you showed a lot of the different things, the barn theater, the lakes, the bars, the golf courses, that type of thing. A lot of people come here, we get a lot of folks coming in out in our neck of the woods for our pristine golf courses that we have out there. So, and they do like to partake in a little bit of alcoholic beverage. So are known as our breweries. So, and we do have a premier brewery with Bell's Brewery and so many of the other microbreweries that are in town. So it is good to, and there are many universities that bring folks in here for the various things that we have. So thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this presentation and for your work on this. Mike asks, my question is, when, how, what is our metric to gauge effectiveness? Is it going to be room nights?
In the short term, that's the easiest to measure, but really what we, what we care about is the visitation and the visitor spending. And so we are, the visitor spending comes from the state of Michigan and it comes unfortunately significantly in arrears. But that's really the best measure because they combine, they look at all, they, they work with a company called Tourism Economics to look at not just hotel stays, but short term rental stays. They look at credit card spending and what the home zip codes are of the people who are, you know, using those credit cards. They look at geolocation data, you know, I could go on and on. They combine all of that to get a very solid estimate of visitor spending. Unfortunately, it takes a long time to do. So in the short term, yes, we're looking at hotel stays and we're using, we're looking at our geolocation data.
Okay, so it's about a year in the arrears, correct?
Yes, it is.
That information from the state. So this campaign then would hopefully then pursue for at least twelve months until we could get that data and figure out what's going on, or is that a, not a possibility?
I, I intend for this campaign to be, work for, for years, if not decades, for, for Kalamazoo County. You know, the more consistently you can invest behind one campaign without kind of chopping and changing, then you really are investing in those distinctive brand assets that then helps everything. Everything else is, can be done more efficiently and effectively in the second, third and fourth years of a campaign.
So you've permeated that, it makes the future advertising campaigns much cheaper.
Exactly.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, just some praises for the campaign. I think certainly there's probably some, some room to tweak or improve. But the really, I just want to lift up, I enjoy the playful use of language, the dynamic font they're using. It looks fun and engaging. It's visually catching. So I think really strong work and watching that presentation, I feel excited to come and, and hang out in the community. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Thank you very much for your work and your continued, if you continued work. That's much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Post, Director Post, Accounts Payable and Payroll Dispersments.
Good afternoon. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Proton, Commissioners, in the absence of Chair Ray for the moment.
She'll be back in about one minute, so.
We have an accounts payable claims list totaling five million, three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and thirty four dollars and seventy nine cents is presented for review. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners is asked to approve claims totaling five million, one hundred and twenty one thousand, six hundred and sixty nine dollars and eighty six cents. Payroll dispersments totaling four million, seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty four cents are presented for the August fifteenth elected and August sixteenth general payrolls. There are no conflicts of interest with this batch of claims. That being said, I welcome any questions from the board.
Questions from Commissioners?
Not a question, but just a request, the very first one under Zhang Financial, for the Investment Consulting, the twenty eight one two. I know I've asked that question, why it comes to the general fund and it gets reimbursed, I understand that. But do we, just if you could shoot me an email, what the total yearly cost of that is to the, the, the committee? Because I know it's not on every single claims list, but if added it up, I'd, I'm like, just curious as to what that is annually.
It is very consistent and it's quarterly.
So it's that times four, it's a hundred, hundred and six grand or a hundred and twelve grand?
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much. That answers that one. All right, moving on, I believe you're up again.
Very well. And, and for what it's worth to tie into that last comment, our next RIC meeting is next Wednesday, the twenty eighth of, of August. And the consultants from Zhang will be there and they're very fascinating and they manage our pension. And so that is a dollar well spent, in my opinion, for what that's worth, if I may comment on that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the monthly financial statement for July of two thousand twenty four. This is a routine document we're sharing every, every month, beginning in, in June, every year, so we can capture six months as we progress throughout the year. And this segment. Every year. So we can capture six months as we progress throughout the year and this segues us into the upcoming budget process. This report is through July. The target is fifty-eight point three percent is where our actuals for both revenue and expenditures should be. I'd like to provide some comments if I may to kind of summarize that. First and foremost, on page two, we've got the revenues by function. Just a few comments, if I may. Central service cost. I just want to keep in front of the board administration that we're still waiting for a response from the state of Michigan. How we report and record our central service costs on the general ledger. We're looking to have a much more simplified approach with that. And once the state confirms that, there will be budget adjustments to follow to reduce the amount of indirect cost. Say that because there's transfers from the general fund to capture full cost and really that just adds fluff to the expenses in the budget. So we want to move away from that philosophy. Number two, we've got the non-department. We'll see, we've got about three point seven million dollars that started out the year of the original budget. Just wanted to share that that is the CIP portion that's going to cover that cost in twenty-four. The board approved that in the adopted budget. Under non-department revenue, you'll see eighty-eight thousand dollars generated. That's just basically two rebates we've received so far in twenty twenty-four. The first is from PNC for our credit card rebate program. That was a little over eleven thousand dollars. The second one is from Consumers Energy. That's a rebate that B and G kind of, uh, manages that program. We received a sixty-five thousand dollar rebate. So that's largely what makes up those two amounts. We'll look at the treasurer's portion. Uh, we can see that there's basically four point eight million dollars in revenue. Specifically, that makes up really three areas. Um, that's interest, dividends and investments, gains and losses. That's about four point six million dollars through July of twenty-four. Obviously that's subject to change, the biggest being the, the gains and losses in the market. But I share that with you as we are in budget season and that's just kind of worth keeping an eye on. We have district court and probate court. Again, on page two in the middle, we can see that, uh, those two probate in particular are doing very well. They've exceeded their, the revenue portion. It's worth notating to the board and administration that the courts, basically the revenues are made up of two areas primarily. Two thirds of those revenues are charges for services and the other third is fines and forfeitures. Continuing on with animal control, we can see that they're almost at sixty-nine percent. Animal services enforcement, excuse me. So they're doing very well. Continuing on down, we've got the register of deeds. Uh, they are eighty-two percent of revenue collected through July, almost one point six million. When we compare July of twenty-three versus this report, July of twenty-three was about a hundred thousand less. So we have a hundred thousand dollars more in twenty-four. And it's also worth notating that, uh, it's a twelve thirty-one twenty-three. That was two point four million dollars that was generated from the register deed. So if we continue with that logic, I would estimate to be about two point five million dollars is what we hit at year end. We have one point nine million dollars budgeted, the six hundred thousand dollar estimated surplus. We've got transfers in. As of twelve, um, we've got, uh, pardon me, the transfers in, um, that's going to come three areas, your accommodation tax. We just kind of talked a little bit about that. There's fifty or ninety thousand coming in from that. We've got the law enforcement fund. That's almost six hundred thousand dollars. That was to, uh, support new funding requests in twenty-four. And we also have the delinquent tax revolving fund. So that's what makes up your transfers there. Moving on to page number three of eight, we've got revenues by source. Just kind of want to highlight three areas, state grants. We look at that. Uh, we can see we've collected a little over six million dollars. That's made up of three areas. In that particular category, we've got the conjunction, convention facilities, PA two alcohol tax, which is one point nine million. We've got the local community stabilization payments, which is about three million. And we've got the state revenue sharing, which is six point two million. So just because you hear state grant, that's kind of misleading. This is purely Department of Treasury's classification of these three particular revenues. So they just had to classify them as state grants because it's coming from the state. We've got the other revenue, which is the second to bottom category. That's pretty much made up of two areas, central service costs and various other forms of reimbursement. A good example of that would be the sheriff's contracts with local municipalities. Last category is other financing sources. That's made up of, um, pretty much the previously generated funds, the fund balance that I mentioned earlier that supports the CIP. So that is page three. Moving on to page number four, we've got the tax revenue, revenue share. This is itemized and the, the last three that I just talked about, that PA two alcohol tax, the local community stabilization payments, as well as the state revenue sharing. You can see that we're fifty percent, give or take. So that tells me the state of Michigan is right on schedule with allocating those payments to us. We're going to move on to page number five. We got expenditures by function. Just kind of wanted to highlight on tonight's, um, regular meeting at seven PM under finance budget adjustments. Under contingencies, we discovered that during the adopted twenty-four budget, our indirect costs that we budgeted in terms of revenue did not align with the, um, areas from those budgets that we were going to charge. We did a, a quick investigation of that and we aligned it. And basically we're going to bring three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in tonight as a budget adjustment into contingencies. In the middle of that page, we've got utilities. Just wanted to point out to the board administration, we're about sixty percent. We should be at fifty-eight percent. We're a little bit over and I just wanted to remind the administration, the board that we did process invoices from twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. So at some point we're going to come back with a budget adjustment, just to make sure there's adequate funding to pay our bills. Corporation counsel, legal services, those do go hand in hand. We can see the corporation counsel budget is about half of where it should be, but we can see the legal services is a little bit more than it should be. They go hand in hand now that we're fully filled, um, less the corporation counsel position. We'll get right back on track between both of those. Circuit court, trial court, right in the middle. Just wanted to point out, we're a little bit over in terms of what the budget amount is versus actuals. That has to do purely with wages. We will be recommending a budget adjustment soon to ensure there's adequate funding to support the wages of our judges that are paid from that budget. Page number six, we've got cooperative extension. That's MSU extension. And just wanted to point out, we're a little bit above the target on that. And it has been determined that the contract that we have with MSU extension for the current year of twenty twenty-four is a little over two hundred and five thousand dollars. However, we only have two hundred and two on the GL. So we're going to be recommending a budget adjustment here at the September seventeenth meeting to increase that. So the contract matches the general ledger. Lastly, on page six, the transfers out. Most of these are transferred out at the beginning of the year. We do that rather than showing them at the opposite of the end of the year because we just want to keep everything in front of us. Uh, not all transfers are sent out at one hundred percent, but most of them are. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that. Lastly, for expenditures by category on page number seven. Really just wanted to hone in on the personnel services because we've been talking about that a little bit lately. And through twenty twenty-four July, there are fourteen of twenty-six payrolls that have been posted to the general ledger. That equates to about fifty-four percent. If we multiply that by our budget, which is approximately forty-six million, we should be at about twenty-four point nine million. But as you can see, we're about twenty-four point three million. That's a six hundred thousand dollar difference through July. That's about an eighty-five thousand dollar variance monthly where there's a, a surplus. Eighty-five thousand dollars a month annualized equates to about a million dollars. So at this given point in time, I'm projecting we'll have about a million dollars of, of spent wages. And I really want to, um, make sure it's clear that we're moving away from past historical personnel budgeting methodology to using munis, the system. So I do not expect to see this as we approach twenty twenty-five. That being said, that concludes the monthly financial statement for July of twenty twenty-four. I welcome any questions from the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Director Post, Vice Chair.
Yeah. Thank you for your, uh, report and thank you for this. I do, do appreciate this each and every month. If you go to page, uh, number seven, as you, um, personnel services supplies, other services and charges and transfers out. We, you show, we're supposed to be at fifty-eight point three three and we're at fifty-seven point three. You mentioned that the transfers out often happen at the beginning of the year. I noticed that we don't do our transfers in at the beginning of the year, but we do our transfers out at the beginning of the year. Common practice at, at the county. Um, but, um, you know, if you take that seventeen, three, sixty-eight and the twenty-three, six, one, four, and you take that out, we're closer to fifty-one percent, fifty-one point two or some fifty-one point, somewhere in there, um, percent. And that puts us about six percent total at an operational surplus. Um, judging by, you know, if, if just the, the personnel services and everything alone, you're, you're looking at approximately of, just on the expenditure side, not even the revenue side, just the expenditure side. You're looking at about about four, four and a half million dollars, four million dollars under on the expenditure side. Is that a ballpark safe assumption?
I think through July of twenty-four, what we're seeing now, that may be accurate. However, I, I want to point out that the way that our, our payables work and the way that they post the general ledger, especially with our processes, like let's use the claims for example. You know, multiple weeks ago, three weeks ago, I believe we, um, we, we, we process these. So I think between our processes to some extent, and I'm not saying that that's a reason to delay it, but that receiving the invoices from vendors and, and, and receiving it and processing it, paying it. You know, earlier I alluded to the fact that we processed multiple invoices from twenty twenty-three, just alone for B and G who processed the utilities. I think that, that kind of happens across the board. Um, we have made changes to contact vendors. We're doing things right now behind the scenes to enhance that with purchasing literally as we speak. And, um, I think we'll just tighten all those areas. There's a lot from out there for different circumstances. But as we continue to navigate through finance and, and what we do and who does what, we will capture all those and, and address them. So to answer your question, I think as of today, that is probably an accurate figure. But it is very common too. I can tell you this. I've seen this in my career, that last quarter is when departments spend. And, and we got to be careful with that because you know, according to how spending really works, we should not be spending money December twenty-fifth. Expecting that to be received by the end of the year because it becomes a fine line. And the auditors do look at that. They request samples of payables. They want to see when orders were placed, when they were paid and those become samples when they look at that particular area of their checklist of an audit.
So you're suggesting the answer to my question is because, um, we're paying our bills a little bit later. That's why that it hasn't shown up in these reports yet because we're always paying two months or a month near sixty days in the rear.
That, that's one reason, if I may. Yeah. Another reason, if, if I can, would be that departments that we've grown our relationships with, we've gotten a look at their spending patterns. And one of the things, you know, that, that we've noticed is we've tried to address areas of overtime, right? Like if you have overtime, let's budge that accordingly. Internal communications, a lot of these departments throughout the years have had to know you've had to pay for that and they've had to reduce their training, their supplies, their other areas. Um, and this has been perpetual and it's grown each year. And so a lot of these departments that, that we work with, we've discovered that it's almost like they're hesitant to spend right away because they want to see what other mandates basically are, are presented to them, that they have to ensure they cover first because they, they know they're not supposed to exceed their bottom operating budget line. And when they're being tasked with, you must pay for this and that, it's, it's really kind of become a challenge for them. So, you know, we've, we've made some changes over the past course of year, our, our T fees and what we're paying for indirect costs. We're trying to be a little bit more friendly, um, look at the scope of the work and not the bottom line financially. So I think as we again, continue to navigate with these processes, working with these departments, the budget process is a good platform to address that. Um, we're being more transparent. Um, I, I still look forward to talk about revenues later. But yeah.
Get to the revenue side in a, in a, in a second. But, um, I, yeah, I do understand that a lot of departments are going to do a lot, large portion of their spending in December as they get close to their end of the budget. It's almost a use it or lose it philosophy, you know, that we, we have here each, each departmental year. I will say though, as respectfully as I can, October, November, December of last year, I was calling on a huge surplus. And the same thing, well, we're going to spend a lot of money at the end of the year. Nine million, eight million dollar surplus. We have close to a thirteen million dollar surplus. I will do it again in July. And I will say this, our revenues are going to vastly exceed what we project on our revenues. Our expenses are going to vastly be lower than what we perceive on our expenses. I mean, at some point we as a, a governing body need to, to, to look at this. And I appreciate the work that has been done, Ryan, I, I, Director Post, I really do. I think you have done a tremendous amount of work in, in the last two years that you've been here. I, I'm just calling on more, especially as it relates to transparency in the budgeting process. We as a governing board need to be aware of what our true revenues and what our two expenditures are, not fluff. Not, um, trying to, to, to pay ourselves or hiring people to figure out what department owes which department. I mean, at some point we've got to become efficient. We've got to become lean and we've, we've got to know these numbers as a board, all of us. Um, and thank you for how far we've come. And I am recognizing that we have farther to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ray. Thank you, Director Post. So just, I want to ask a little further on that sort of cultural position, if you will, of the, the departments and that sort of expenditure hoarding, uh, that's been in place, sort of built in a, a culture of scarcity that's been present for a long time. As we have these dialogues around departments for more accurate budgeting and ensure more confident use of their resources to impact the community. You know, I'm, I, this is a really sort of like a soft skill question, but how long do you think it will take to sort of work through that sort of cultural issue? It's been sort of ingrained in the way the departments are operating. You're having ongoing dialogue. But when, you know, you think in the next budget cycle, we're going to see most of that resolved? Do you expect it to take longer? What are, what's your goal to see that sort of resolution? We come more to a true and clear process?
I hold myself to a certain standard and I have to remind myself sometimes that it does take time. And to align that standard with, with your question in terms of the timeline. I think, you know, within three to five years. And I just want to share what comes with that, right? So I think in the three to five years, let's, let's talk about what that entails. Let's talk about, you know, we're moving away from correctly, more accurately budgeting the wages. We're talking about, uh, looking at ways to assess departments' budgets in terms of what they're paying for and how much they're paying for. So I, I think those are going on. But you know, we, we want to develop, um, a structure where we have an accountant by department and fund. And I will disclose that we've been operating behind the scenes with that relationship. We just haven't formally announced it yet. You, there's two major processes we go through, budget and audit. Um, those accountants have gone through the ropes and they will continue. At some point we will announce it. But I think to get those accountants where they need to be, I think purchasing accounts payable, we have to continue to develop leaders. And, and that's part of the process. We are still, um, implementing munis as we speak. There's modules out there that we want to develop. So I, I don't see it's going to be three to five years to get departments, you know, budgets accordingly. I think it's three to five years to get that finance team fully equipped, understanding what, what needs to be done. How to reach out to elected offices or department heads, how to answer their questions, what to look for, how to help these departments and elected offices manage their budget, um, with their spending, revenues. Uh, there, there's so much opportunity that we haven't even tapped into yet, but I think what we're doing and I hope it's, it's apparent, we're building up, right? We're, we're starting at the bottom and then we're elevating that. And I think you've seen that with board agendas that are coming from finance and we're at the tail end of that. So I think once we have this team fully equipped and we're really close, then it's okay, here's the expectations, here's the standards. You always need a couple of cycles, unfortunately. This is a niche, what we do in county government finance. So it's, you, you got to equip these folks, bring them up to speed and then let them go. And that is going to take three to five years and that will get departments fully equipped and managing their budgets better. You're welcome.
Really quick, and I completely agree with your assessment and it makes me happy to hear you say that because I think you're absolutely right. It's going to It's going to take about three years to accurately change that. The first step already happened. It happened in last year's budget cycle when we appointed twenty-three uh, new people and new positions in county government. And the second step is going to happen in this next budget cycle as we as we continue down this process of revenue and expenditures. But it has to happen with this board and with Kevin's leadership. We have to direct Kevin to to get this done, and that's that's how it works. And and Kevin has been doing a great job, and Brian, you guys have been doing a great job compared to where we are now. Compared to where we were in three years in our budgeting process, we've made leaps and bounds. Um, but you're absolutely right. We have to get our house in order. The the Commissioner Scrubs, you hit the nail on the head, and you said culture of scarcity. That's that's absolutely right. We have department heads that operate under a culture of scarcity, where there is no scarcity. Um, we as a board are recognizing that, we're charging our administration to go forward and 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 doing that. We've we've made profound steps. We've we've got more to go. But I think I think the three years is absolutely right, and that's when we start going after opportunities, going after things that our HCS director needs with grant writers. That we can get more revenue into our departments. I think once we have that structure in place, that infrastructure in place, um, and we're not operating under a skeletal crew of staff. But that we have the people in place to actually be proficient and efficient. Um, we're going to start doing really good things in Kamazoo County. I think we're close. We're not there yet, but I think we're close.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Director Poe. So next up, we have the our monthly investment report. Welcome, Tyler.
Thank you, Chair. For our July twenty-twenty-four investment report, uh, as of July thirty-first, the county's investment portfolio has a par value balance of a hundred forty-two million, seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and twelve cents. And a market value of one hundred forty-one million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, the mark-to-market variance between our par and market values is one million, three hundred one thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars, forty-eight cents. Uh, I want to note that this is an improvement over last month as well by six hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars, forty-eight cents. Uh, and for context, over the last three months, our portfolio market value has increased by over one point one seven million dollars from when it fell off in April. Uh, and April's drop in values was again based on inflation numbers at that time, unemployment claims at that time. Uh, and I also want to point out that these returns don't reflect the market drop at the beginning of August or its rebound since. We'll go into a little more detail about economic activity and all the news that's been going on with the inflation updates, uh, but just wanted to preface that here. As for the actual returns for the month of July, our portfolio earned five hundred sixty-six thousand dollars on an average daily balance of a hundred forty-one million, nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents. For an effective rate of return on the county's investments of four point seven percent. This rate of return is inclusive of all uh, realized gains and losses on sales and maturities, as well as amortization of investment premiums and discounts. Our year-to-date earnings, inclusive of all the same, totals four million, sixty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars flat. Of the four point oh-six million we've earned so far, two million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents. Relates to the general fund and budget stabilization investment pools. If we assume the rest of the year follows a similar trend as January through July, we'll be on track to earn six point nine seven million throughout the year. And note that we're going to be investing more funds as tax dollars come in, so this may increase. Uh, we've been going without tax collections uh, all the way up until July. For our inflation numbers, inflation over the last twelve months uh, through July was two point nine percent, and this is down from three percent in June. Uh, and this is the lowest twelve-month report since March of twenty-twenty-one. It's a sign that the Bureau of Labor Statistics is making forward progress towards its two percent inflation target. And our four point seven percent rate of return on investments is higher than inflation, and we experienced a net gain of one point eight percent. Uh, July twenty-four inflation was spread across the categories uh, below, so food, two point two percent. Energy commodities or fuel went down two percent. Energy service or utilities went up four point two percent. Shelter was up five point one percent. Transportation services up eight point eight percent, medical services up three point three percent. And other commodities, including vehicles, apparel, medical commodities, down one point nine percent. All this is weighted to get us to our uh, two point nine percent. As for the newsworthy month that I mentioned earlier, uh, it's worth breaking down a little bit of what's happening. So you might have heard at the beginning of August, market values dropped pretty significantly. That's because the Bank of Japan raised interest rates uh, from zero to zero point one percent to about zero point two-five percent. And at face value, this doesn't do anything for us, except for the fact that it sent markets scrambling. Global traders sold U.S. stocks to cover debts that were in Japanese yen. They invested in uh, Japanese yen because it's a cheaper currency, and then they would turn around and buy U.S. stocks. But when that rate increased, they had to sell that to cover their now more expensive debts. Uh, and that sell-off is what happened uh, to lead to the August fifth drop-off. That said, as of yesterday's market close, the Dow Jones rebounded all of its losses and was up fifty-three points. And for those keeping track at home, as of today, it's down nine points from July. So a little bit of a roller coaster, but no significant impact on us as of right now. Uh, other news, jobless claims were released on August first, showing the number of Americans filing for unemployment benefits was at its highest level in a year for the weekend of July twenty-seventh. So the last time we had one of those reports. But according to the Bureau, the unemployment rate rose from four point one percent to four point three percent uh, from June to July. A part of this increase because more individuals are entering the labor market, and they aren't previously included in the calculation. Once they started looking for a job, now they are. A little update about what we might be seeing, and this all does lead somewhere, I promise. The Federal Reserve's dual mandate is to foster low and stable inflation and to maximize employment without increasing inflation. Unlike inflation where we have a target rate, two percent, uh, there isn't one for unemployment. It varies based on whatever the market data happens to show. But the increase in unemployment rate suggests that the first federal interest rate cut will happen in September. As of August seventh, when we had an update from our partners at Huntington about the uh, economic update through the end of the year. They use their Bloomberg terminal uh, to see more than what we can. The market is pricing the twelve-month Treasury note at four point two-five percent uh, compared to today's range of five point two-five or five and a half percent. Or put another way, the market anticipates a one percent to a one point two-five percent cut in interest rates over the next twelve months. Uh, what we're looking at in September is expected to be between point two-five percent, maybe half a percent. Uh, and we'll be looking out for that with the next updates from the Bureau and the Federal Reserve. And finally, the county will have funds to invest throughout the fall as property tax collections are received. We anticipate capturing some solid returns going forward. And note that we've already started to shift our portfolio to a longer-term strategy. We did so during the summer, anticipating these rate cuts. Now they're starting to happen. That's also part of why our net gain and purchasing power is higher in July than it was in June, and we hope to keep that trend going forward. So we have more money to spend on great things. That's a lot of data I just presented, a lot of stuff. If you have any questions, would like me to clarify anything, please let me know. I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you for your report. Uh, I appreciate you bringing in the unemployment rate because I was going to ask you that question today. So I knew it went up to about four point five or something in that neighborhood, so. Um, and you kind of clarified why that, why that trend happened, so. Um, I think it was a very good report, very positive on our earnings and whatnot, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. See you next month. All right, next up, we have the twenty-twenty-five budget discussion. Administrator Kellin.
Thank you, Chair Vice Chair, Vice Chair of Temp Commissioners. Uh, this evening, in spirit of the twenty-twenty-five budget process, we want to start with a presentation this evening. Uh, about the twenty-twenty-five revenues and what we will do uh, in our projections surrounding that. What we'll do is present some historical data as well along with that, and then we'll be able to take some questions. So I'll ask Director Poe to to come up and and deliver the presentation that will take questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Kellin. All right. Dina, or is she able to pull up the the slide presentation? Twenty-twenty-five budget discussion.
I did not have that available.
Dean, I just emailed it to you. Well, Dean, I was pointing that up. I want to um, thank the administration for allowing me this opportunity to present the major sources of revenue for the twenty-twenty-five budget discussion. The twenty-twenty-five budget, kind of piggyback off of recent comments from the financial statement, this is my first budget in Kamazoo County in twenty-twenty-five. Um, so we really look forward to assessing what we've seen the last year and a half um, as a team and bringing that forward. And just want to let the board know that we did hear you loud and clear about everything. And and what you should be observing as we continue to present each monthly financial statement. You know, a year ago at this time, it, we were still figuring out, right, what what the trends were. Now, a year later, what we're doing is we're identifying those areas, hence register fees revenue, hence payroll tax, hence central service costs. As we see them to bring to your attention with the game plan and goal in mind as we present the twenty-five budget, we incorporate all that and we move forward effectively. Thank you, Dina. All right. We just talked about this. This is the by-function of all of our revenue of the current year. We're going to talk about this to kind of segue us into our discussions, but we've identified the major areas of our revenue. And what's going to happen is when we just look at this real briefly, we can see the current year's general fund budget is about ninety-one million dollars. We're going to talk about um, a handful of areas tonight that make up about ninety percent of all the revenues. And the areas that we're not going to talk about, I kind of already alluded to, the courts, the revenue, the fees for service, the sheriff's office has contracts with locals. Um, those we're not going to talk about, but they're out there. And so while some of those are performed by contractual reimbursement, some are fee set by the state. Um, we're just, you know, we're not going to talk about those tonight, but they are out there. But what we will talk about is, Dean, if we can move to the next slide, please? Thank you. By source, so um, this really summarizes where we're at of a ninety-one million dollar budget. Roughly more than half of that comes from taxes, um, the state grants we talked about earlier, the um, convention facilities tax, the local community stabilization payments, the um, uh, shared revenue sharing. That's what that makes up. So these are kind of all the areas we just talked about to keep you fresh with that. And now let's begin looking at some data. Next slide, please, Dina. So the first area is the Convention Facility Development Fund, alcohol tax. This is set forth by the state. Um, previously fifty percent of this revenue had to go towards substance abuse and prevention providers, and the county maintained the other fifty percent. Last year, there was a recent change. Now that forty percent of that revenue uh, must be allocated towards that endeavor. And that's been Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health traditionally and Kamazoo County. What that does to the twenty-five budget is we are uh, scheduled to receive one point nine million of that. Forty percent will go to Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health. The net to the county is about one point two million. Um, this was last communicated to us on uh, May fourteenth of twenty-four. I do not expect that to change. However, it's the state and it is always subject to change. Next slide, please. This right here is data. I want to use this as an opportunity to provide full transparency, pre-COVID, COVID, and post-COVID. Um, when we look at the payments received, um, you've got the top category is the description is budget amended. And then you've got the actual what was collected, the difference, the percent collected, and then the last two columns. Other rows are budget increase and actual percent increase. So this gives a good picture of what the state has provided to us, but more importantly, what finance has budgeted. And so as we continue to receive those communications, we want to budget accordingly. The whole goal is to have the difference be as close to zero as possible. Next slide, please. Dina, thank you. We've got the state revenue sharing. Again, this comes from the state. They uh, they provide those distributions to us as it relates to the twenty-five budget. This is the executive recommendation, and I really want to highlight that because that is not finalized, and that is going to change from what I hear. So currently, it's six point seven million dollars because it's going to change. I don't want to spend too much time on those categories, but it's going to increase slightly, so I will leave it at that. Next slide, please. We've got the history right there. That's going to be subject to change as well for twenty-five because of that dollar amount. But again, what it shows is what was budgeted and then what was actual. And when you look at the budget, you'll see there's no decimals. Those are hundred-dollar increments. That's how Kamazoo County we budget, and then the actuals are to the penny. And that gives a little bit of history. That being said, next slide, local community stabilization payments. This just basically is language that talks about the purpose for the allocations. Um, I get more caught up in the actual allocations themselves, so that's what I'm going to focus on. That's for your leisure. Next slide, please, Dina. Looking at the history, we can see the the growth of this slow growth of this program that the state authorizes our payments. And basically what we can see in twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-one that we we did not budget enough. And so I will assure you that as we move forward, or assure you, I should say that that's not going to be the case. We're going to budget what we know. Next slide, please, Dina. The adult-use recreational marijuana tax, really want to emphasize on this because there's been really, I believe, three laws over the years. Um, right now, there's off the medical um, and and the adult use, the recreational, that's what the payments we're receiving a lot of. And really, it's it's the top bullet point, fifteen percent um, to municipalities is what pertains to um, Kamazoo County. Actually, it's the second bullet bullet point, I apologize. But um, that's a little bit more language, comes directly from Treasury's website that talks about those payments we receive. That's for your leisure. Next slide. Thank you, Dina, for this. This is the table that talks about or illustrates those payments. We can see in nineteen, we did not receive anything. Twenty, we did not budget anything, but we received three hundred and thirty-six thousand. Then next year, there was a spike in twenty-one, post-COVID, million dollars, nothing was budgeted. Twenty-two, we budgeted a hundred and sixty-eight K but received almost one point six million. And then the budgeted amount has increased accordingly over the past few years, and that will continue um, to uh, to be the case. What is worth notating about this, though, is we will not receive these payments until the following year. So to articulate that, in twenty-three's payment, we received just a few months ago. The year's closed. So we just got to record it back, and whatever we get, we get. Um, it was a surplus last year. We budgeted one million dollars. We got one point nine. So we're going to factor that in in terms of our budgeting philosophy.
Really uh, quick, um, the uh, the, why don't we just skip a year and just factor it in the the one point seven-five for the following year's budget? And just put down a a zero one year and then say this will come in in the following year's budget? Don't we have a problem with auditors if we're getting the payments in like March or April to 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 allocate it to a previous year?
We are not, um, the auditors do not support that because the We are not, the auditors do not support that because the payments, they are earmarked for that year. And it is early enough in the audit process that that they do expect there are certain ones, the LCA payment is another one. On the last slide, I've got the dates of anticipated receipt. But because these are major revenues, they want them in the year that that it pertains to. So we have to capture that, unfortunately.
So we're good with the auditors collecting it past that 60-day deadline or whatever they they're okay.
Yeah, so we have to, because of that right there, we have to budget accordingly. And so but that's okay, because I think as you're going to see, we're going to get more accurate with our projections. I'll leave it at that. Okay, the central service cost recovery. I love to teach. I love to coach. So I am holding in front of me for those that are not familiar with it, with the cost allocation plan looks like, looks like a thought book, right? There's a lot of data, a lot of numbers going there. Each year, we spend over $11,000 with Maximus to prepare this document. And basically what it does is it captures your core services that are, you know, on that last bullet point there. And we send them our general ledger from the prior year that's the stated statements from the auditors. We share that with them. They allocate costs based on these key areas. And they say you need all of these to operate accounting government. You need a depreciation. That's accounting insurance. You got to pay your bills, finance, utilities, B and G, security, administration, IT, legal, HR, treasures. The last few are on there because of previous finances recommendations of the consultants to capture that information. That's no longer the case. But long story short, the costs are allocated and then basically they're determined of what's appropriate to charge each funder grant. And so that's what that's made up of. Next slide, please, Dina. What we can see here, and I kind of have been preparing the board for this, is there are circumstances that we are sending transfers from the general fund to these other funds just to recover the full cost. I do not see the value to that. I think we can continue to use this plan. I think we can continue to charge grants indirect costs. I just don't think to the level that we've been doing it and to the general ledger is not necessary. Again, that's been supported by our auditors, Maximus, the consultants, and I'm just waiting for that confirmation from the state for the complete green light on that. But this slide right here, it does include transfers out expenses from the general fund to receive the full central service cost. So if we look, for example, at '23, we can see we budgeted 6.4 million and we generated about 5.8 million. Next slide, please, Dina. So once we back out the transfers from the general fund, if we look at '23 again, we can see that that's 3.3 million and we generated 3.5 million. So that's the difference right there of, you know, two to three million. That's just not necessarily accurate. So we want to move away from that. So when you compare the last two slides, what you're seeing is '25 are the same numbers. There's no transfers from the general fund. We want to move away from that. And that's just going to provide a few more benefits of transparency. It reduces your bottom line operating budget. You have a fund balance policy that says 20, 25% must be set aside. That $5 million difference makes it makes the difference to the bottom line of that policy. So this is just a great screenshot, these two slides, to show what we've been doing versus really what the net is and what that really does to us. And it is a different story when you see both methodologies. The second methodology is what we want to move to.
Ryan, we have a question. Commissioner Shif.
Thank you, Director Post. Apologize for my need for education. So actuaries at Maximus doing those sort of indirect service costs, aren't we typically just applying what's the de minimis rate for indirect costs? And so how does that play into what the actuaries then calculate? And then you identified indirect costs and among them the HCS, the Hellcat facility. And are those, did you indicate those are no longer going to be included as indirect service costs? And what what's the impact them has overall? Thank you.
Yeah, that's that's a that's a little question, but I'm prepared. Yeah, so we we did back out the areas that, well, first and foremost, the HCS facility was up there because that cost allocation plan that year, that's when we did not pay the 9 million cash for it. So that was an internal service fund. So because of that, we had to include it. Now, we paid cash for it and we own it. It's now longer an internal service fund. It's not included by definition. But you know, to with the indirect cost that the net impact, you know, we we introduced, we amended the current indirect and rent policy. And so when I worked with administration on this and said, this is what I believe we should lean towards, and here's why. We looked at all the 23 charges of revenue and we compared everybody that we collected indirect costs from. And we said, okay, when we compare that amount to their budget, what does this look like in alignment with that proposed policy? And that policy, to refresh you all, is any new grant, any new fund, let's use the Veterans Milage this year. Great example. It's not included in the cost allocation plan from two years ago. So this policy, it's very transparent. It says, okay, veterans, 10% of your budget, we're going to budget for indirect costs. Subsequently, as we progress through that fiscal year, whatever you spend, 10% of that we're going to charge. So we applied a lot of these scenarios in that policy. And just to further that policy, that language, it says if you are included in the cost allocation plan, we're going to set a cap at 15%. So this really helps finance because when we look at grants or funds, the veterans, for example, and say, we know how much you're going to generate or what your grant's going to be, we can now, for the first time ever, budget accordingly. Is it a new grant, new fund, 10%? Is it a grant that's or a fund that's included, 15%? And then we will charge 15% of that. We compared that policy with '23's actuals. And while we have the transfers coming from indirect, we generate $6.5 million. And I think 9,000 of that we would have had to leave on the table because it would exceed the 15%. So by updating that policy, that was kind of getting the momentum going. And then when we applied it to show what the numbers landed at the result, it all went hand in hand. And for the $9,000 that we're going to lose, that level of transparency is supported by the auditors, by Maximus, and number three pending from the state of Michigan. That's what we want, and we're really close to getting there. So this really kind of cleans that up. It's going to be more friendly to departments. They'll know going into it. You know, when HCS, our largest grantor department in the county receives all these allocations, they're always waiting. What's the cost allocation plan say? How much do we truly get to operate with? If you get $100,000 grant, you know, 30,000 of it has to go to indirect costs. If you just think about those numbers I just presented, if they have $100,000 grant, now 15,000 becomes the cap, not 30. So that 15,000, they can use for the scope of the services of the actual grant. So we met with every department, the courts, they get their grants from the scale, Supreme Court, Administrator's Office. They do not even allow indirect costs. So why do we do that with that? The sheriffs have a few of them, the prosecutors. We met with every department that receives a grant in Kamazoo County and we discussed the policy and we discussed what we want to move to. And they're like, yeah, sounds great, you know, less is more, and that's what we're aiming for here. Okay. Next slide, please, Dina. Investments. We just kind of articulated a little bit on this. This shows some great history right here. We can see pre-COVID, COVID, '21, all the way to current. And and really what stands out the most is the jump from '22, we budgeted 905,000. We actually had a deficit of 420,000. I don't know what happened. I was not here. I'm not able to comment on that. But in '23, the next year, we kept that same amount budgeted, 905K, 4.3 million. That is significant. So I think working with the Treasurers Office, we do speak frequently. They've made some changes in there. They want to identify specific revenues such as interest, such as the investments and gains and losses, and it allows them to see now really what's going on that makes up all the investments. So I think what they've done is taken a step further in terms of transparency, and now literally you see the dividends. So that's the investments. As we approach the 25 budget, I would encourage that number of what we've been making year to date for consideration with with some cushion because it's been a significant increase. Okay, so the next slide, we've got before we go to that slide.
Really quick, I I think budgeting your your interest rates, and as much as I've been harping on that, we've been underperforming with current interest rates. I do not anticipate interest rates being as high as they are in 2025. Doing five-year projections on investment income, I think is usually a bad idea because the markets change so quick and new information is far more valuable than what you can plan for five years in advance.
Okay. Okay, so this slide here, we're getting towards the tail end, slide 16 of 19. This is the current real property tax. Obviously, this is the largest form of revenue in Kamazoo County. Just want to really explain the methodology, what we've been using. So basically, there's there's a couple of steps to this. Number one is we want to capture, in this case, 2023, the most recent audited prior year's actuals of current year's projected tax revenue. So we have the 23 actuals that came in about 48.5 million. And then we multiply that by 4.5%. That was the rate that was recommended from the board administration for '24. So we multiply that by four and a half percent. That brings us to about 50.7 million. That's what we consider today our estimated 24 revenue. We then use that number and we multiply that by the next year's projected tax rate, which is used, in this case, used for the 25 budget process. So what we're going to do is we're going to multiply that projected 50.7 million, the 24 estimated actual. And we're going to multiply that by the next year's projected rate. It was brought to my attention from administration and the board to recommend to use 4.75 as of today. And so that brings us to 53 million, a little bit over, and that's what we have in the 25 budget so far.
Sorry. Really quick, why did you use 4.5? Why didn't you use the actuaries for the equalization?
I just wanted to continue with the historical methodology. With that, how we budgeted our taxes, that is a great point and great question. That is one of the things that we've talked about behind the scenes and we have another, a different approach to.
It would generate you about 160 grand, I think, if you use the actual amounts as opposed to the 4.5.
Yep, this is just this that historical methodology that we want to keep in front of us that is going to be subject to change under this board administration, the finance director. Okay, so with that being said, this last slide here, 17 of 19, this gives us again those years of actuals and the trends. And that's what it looks like. The one thing that I want to point out, this has been a very somewhat accurate, you know, model that that's been used. So for example, in 2019, we had 39,880,000, what was budgeted, you know, 40 million came in. That's a $395,000 difference. That is pretty good when you're talking about budgeting at that level. However, when you follow that trend and you look at '20, '21, '22, '23, you can see now exponentially that variance increases significantly on a bell curve. And so when in 2023, last year, we budgeted 46,815,000 and 48 and a half million came in, that's a surplus of 1.7 million. And, you know, I I think if you take an average of those or you take an average of the surpluses, I think that's another way to kind of how to look at what to project.
I I don't think it's a linear equation. I I think it's a calculatic equation. And part of the reason is that 4.5% that you've been using historically as our equalization has increased over that 4.8% number. It'll compound each and every single year, and it'll grow that differential.
We are, we are definitely open to best practices, and that is what we have so far as of today. But we are definitely assessing what our options are. We want to compare scenarios. And we want to compare those scenarios. If we would have used them in prior years, what that would have showed us, just was not able to get to that too today, but that is other reason. So with that being said, next slide, please, Dina. And, you know, we'll end on this, our key points for discussion. You've got your four areas of fixed revenue determined by the state of Michigan. Those dates are off to the right, italicized in parentheses. When we can see those, that helps us with the year-end process. We've got our central service costs. We've already talked about that. We're just waiting for the state to confirm the three layers of support to no longer budget the full amount of central service costs and transfer from the general fund. Our investments, we've already kind of hit on that. There's a potential to increase based on the trends. Again, I think we've been budgeting $2.2 million and current year we're 4.6, give or take. So there's some wiggle room there, keeping everything in front of us based on the market. And then the current real property tax, we factor in a 4.75% increase. So these are, again, major, major revenues in Kamazoo County of the 91 million. I think this is close to 80, give or take. So, yeah, with that being said, last slide, this is the end of the discussion. Welcome any, any questions. We covered a lot there, but I think the great value here is having this documented with the numbers and the actuals and the trends, and we look forward to doing this with expenses at the next board meeting.
Promise.
Yeah, first off, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Terrell. Thank you. Thank you, Lindy. We, like I said earlier, we are getting better. This 4.75% increase, we've never budgeted over 3% increase. I, as I recall, in the history of Kamazoo County, I think that is smart forward thinking. We're hitting 5, 8% in some equalization reports. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think we're maybe a touch light in the the cannabis tax, and it may be a touch light this year in the investments, although that would be the last I'd want to touch. I'd see that as more of a one-term money source to go towards CIP or one-term purchases. But and then our state revenue sharing, I I anticipate about $600,000. You're looking at under the 11% increase for probably based on our tax, tax base, probably at about a nine and a half, 10. But I just want to say kudos because this on the revenue side, I mean, it leaves us a little bit of wiggle room, as you said, as we get to, you know, priorities and stuff. If we're close and we need to find some, like a small amount here and there. But I think this is, this is pretty close to accurately on the revenue side, and I think you did a very good job on this. So I want to give kudos to the staff on this, and I know I seem like I come across as kind of a curmudgeon sometimes. I'm looking over at Monty's and she's like, oh, yeah, you are. But um, but no, I I I take this seriously, and I know you guys do too. And I appreciate you, and I appreciate the work that went into this. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll defer to Administrator Catlin. I'll see you in a few weeks when we talk expenses.
Thank you. That's it? Okay. All right. So next up, we have the first reading of two proclamations. We won't read them tonight. I'll just read their titles and then somebody can read them at the next meeting. We have a proclamation honoring Thurston Hendricks, Ian Webster, and Sean Willoughby, Trip 205 Eagle Scout recipients, and then a proclamation designating September as National Suicide Prevention Month. Anybody have any questions or comments on those before we move forward? All right, seeing none, is there a motion for closed session?
Thank you, Chair. I move that the board meet in closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268D to consider the purchase or lease of real property for city and county purposes. I do the second one at the same time? Or should we do that separately? Okay, I'll let Commissioner Strub do the second.
I'll support.
Q, it's been properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? I know that's what I'm looking at. Do any roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Try to be slick there. We call the roll course. I tried to be slick there. Will you call the roll course, please?
Vice Chair Protem Heffler. Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Chair Ray. Commissioner Strubs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler. You have seven yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Shropes.
Thank you, Chair. I move we enter closed session, closed session pursuant to MCL one five point two six eight D to consider the purchase or lease of real property for county purposes for.
It has been properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, will you call the roll course, please?
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales. Chair Ray. Commissioner Strubs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler. Vice Chair Protem Heffler. You have seven yes.
All right, the motion carries. We're off.
With adjourn to the call of the chair, please, madam.
See, listen, I got this note.
Oh, you do?
Wasn't sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me write closed session on here. So we are going to adjourn to the call of the chair.
Thank you.
All right, welcome back people. Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
It's been moved and supported.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Mazer.
Yep, here.
Commissioner Morales. Chair Ray. Commissioner Strubs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor. Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gistler. Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. All right, you have seven yes.
Yeah, so we're just gonna look crazy for four minutes. We have a break, but we gotta start this next meeting at seven. So let's say without objection, this meeting is adjourned. And then we'll wait until seven in five minutes. All right, we are going to call the court order the regular meeting of the County Board of Commissioners for August 20th, 2024. Uh, we are going to start with our invocation and reflection by Pastor David Cannaberski, the Senior Associate Pastor at Calvary Bible Church in Kalamazoo, on behalf of Commissioner Mazer.
Thank, thank you for having me. First of all, appreciate the, the opportunity, your senior pastor that usually comes as out of town, so he invited me to come and take part. Just a quick quote, William, I don't know if you're familiar with the William Wilberforce, he was a British politician from the seventeen hundreds to the early eighteen hundreds. And he was a leader in the movement to abolish slavery, and he has this quote. He says this, "To live our lives and miss that great purpose we are designed to accomplish is truly a sin. It is inconceivable that we could be bored in a world with so much wrong to tackle, so much ignorance to reach, and so much misery that we could alleviate." I just thought that's a great reminder for all of us, isn't it, in our culture and times today as well? Well, let's just open our time in prayer. So I thank you for these commissioners and their willingness to serve this community and to demonstrate grace and mercy to others. But we pray, as we pray together, we're thankful to the Lord, and Jeremiah 29:7 says, "We should seek the welfare of the city where..." seven says, "We should seek the welfare of the city where we live in exile," and to pray for the Lord on its behalf for its welfare that you and I will live in. We also thank you and we pray for those who are hurting our community, who need healing. Some are struggling with anxiety and stress and trauma. Help us and our community members to love and to encourage those in our midst. We also pray for our families, we pray for families in our community to be strengthened, to open communication with one another. And our community be able to help children, parents, spouses grow together in unity. We pray for peace and protection for our homes. Pray specifically for our leaders that they would lead in it with integrity and character. Help them to make wise decisions that impact many of us here in Kalamazoo. We pray for businesses and government and agencies and church leaders throughout our neighborhoods and the city, that we would also lead with integrity, character, and humility. We pray for our city that we would see transformation happen through wise decisions by leaders, specifically even this council. And individuals that would not seek their own good, but the good of others. Pray for reconciliation in our communities, we, we ask and seek forgiveness and healing where there needs, where there has been hurt. Reconciliation for where there's been divisions. And help us to grow together with people who are even not like us. And these things we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Amen, thank you. All right, and with that, we are going to take a fifteen-minute recess. We'll be back at seven eighteen. Thank you, Pastor. We back. Lou, can we say we're back?
Only if you use the words, but now call the meeting back to order. Clerk, take the roll, please.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting back to order at seven nineteen PM. Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Vice Chair Taylor? Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Here.
Commissioner Gisler? Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler? Commissioner Mazur?
Here.
Commissioner Morales?
Present.
Chair Ray? Commissioner Strubs?
Here.
You have seven present.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Kevin. I'm sorry, guys. All right. Item number four, we don't have any proclamations. We also don't have any communications. Are there any commissioners who would like to share any communications? All right, seeing none, we, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August seventh committee of the whole meeting, in regular meeting.
Support.
All right, it's been properly moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Item number seven, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition?
Yes.
It's, uh, Commissioner Cattle, so there's actually two items. One would be the item to approve the ARPA award from the city of Kalamazoo for the purpose, or for the one point two million dollars leverage funding to undertake the development of transitional and emergency housing within the county, and then part of that motion would often part of that motion would authorize the chair to execute that agreement. The other motion would authorize administrator controller to begin negotiating other purposes of real property for county use. So there's two motions that should be added to that new business.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Kellin. Vice Chair Pro Tim.
May I amend my motion to approve the agenda with the two additional? Take a motion to approve the agenda with the two additional items.
Support.
All right, it's been properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda has been approved with the two additions. The next item on the agenda is public comment time. This is a time when anyone may address the board on any topic. If you would like to address the board, please come to the podium. Please state your name and tell us where you're from. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Your time is displayed and once your three minutes are up, your time to speak is finished. This is a time to provide input in a professional respectful manner. Are there any members of the public who wish to make public comment? Seeing none. Uh, we don't have any hands raised online. So it's been a quiet meeting. We will move right along. Vice Chair Taylor, will you take us through the consent agenda, please?
I will. We have under administration a request for approval and.
I'm sorry, the, my apologies and um, did I miss my opportunity to move something from consent agenda? Can I do that now? My apologies. Okay, my apologies. So I just wanted to have some discussion. Uh, I'm trying to find it. Um, for the Office of Community Corrections. Uh, it's under Sheriff's Office item W opioid settlement funding allocation. I just want to have some discussion around that so we could bring that to not consent. Thank you.
Okay, I have a request under administration, a request for approval and signature of a professional agreement with Wells Design Studio. Request to authorize the county administrator controller to execute a contract amendment number ten with CSM Group and settlement and release agreement with Power Pingster. Necessary to proceed with the Judge Charles A. Pratt Justice Center Building Project. Under Board of Commissioners, a request for a review and approval of the twenty twenty-three statewide apprenticeship expansion grant under Michigan Works. Request for and review and approval of appropriation year twenty twenty-four Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Adult Dislocated Worker and Youth Program allocations under Michigan Works. Request to approval and amended resolution in support of the Open Database Committee. A request for approval of appointments to the Environmental Health Advisory Council. Request for approval of appointments to the Materials Management Planning Committee. Request for approval and appointment at the South Ray Corridor Improvement Authority Authority. Under Buildings and Grounds, a request for approval and signature for T and M Contract Amendment and with abatement and demolition services. Under Finance, uh, recommendation for approval of accounts payable and payroll disbursements. Request for approval of various budget adjustments and transfers, housekeeping. Request for approval of position elimination and creation. Request for approval of a temporary employee position creation, health and community services. A request for approval and signature of Contract Amendment Number Two with Milestone Senior Services. Request for approval and signature of Contract Amendment Number One with South County Community Services. Request for approval of the Phase Two Agreements between the Area Agencies on Aging Association of Michigan four A. M. and the sixteen Michigan Area Agencies on Aging and two for the Kalamazoo County Area Agency on Aging Division Manager to electronically sign agreements. Under Housing, a request for approval and signature of a subordination and in creditator agreement between the City of Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo County, Standard Catus Four Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnerships and the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Request for approval of a one million dollar promissory note and two, the approval and signature of the loan agreement with Standard Catus Four Limited Dividend Housing Association. Human Resources, a request for approval and signature of claim integration agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Marathon Health. Sheriff, a request for approval and signature on Rico purchase and equipment removal buyout authorizations for the Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Office. Request for adoption and signature of a local emergency planning committee, L. E. P. C. bylaws. I move that all motions be or all motions be considered as a consent agenda and be voted on by the board.
It's been properly moved and supported. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler. Commissioner Mazer.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales. Chair Ray. Commissioner Strabs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler. You have seven yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Have no unfinished business in general orders. Next up is item number eleven, business and I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for approval to reallocate ARPA funding within HCS awards related to building renovations and two of signature of quote proposal attachments, A, B, and E. Is there a motion? We need a motion to discuss it. All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler, supported by Commissioner Morales. Uh, Administrator Kellin, you wanna give a quick update on this one? If you don't, I can't. So this is the ARPA, yeah.
Apologies, Chair. So yes, this item is a real is is a request to reallocate uh, funding that was originally awarded through the Provision of Government Services Subcommittee and then subsequently the board approved some funding for HCS to purchase, in particular, their environmental division, purchase some software for the purpose of the environmental division. When they went out, uh, when they requested that funding originally back in August of, uh, August sixteenth of twenty twenty-two, when the award was made, they obtained quotes for such a system and, uh, in the procurement process of that system, it ended up costing, uh, less than what they originally thought it would. So they asked for five hundred thousand dollars and I believe it came out to a hundred and fifty thousand or something, yeah. Way, way less than what it originally cost. As you know, they also received funding to renovate the, uh, building as well. And that was the amount of five hundred thousand. As they've been kind of going through the process of renovating the building and, uh, addressing a lot of the issues that we, uh, have, uh, I would say. Well, and and lack for better phrase, I guess, we've sort of, um, just adopted these, uh, through the acquisition of the property. A lot of these renovations, uh, are just just coming up and they're costing a little bit more money. So they like to reallocate the leftover funds, so the remaining dollars from the original acquisition of that software, the E. H. software, uh, to additional, uh, building renovations, uh, for additional work that's needed at that facility, uh, at three eleven East Alcott. So that's kind of the gist there. We can get into more details. I know we have helped Officer Rutherford here, uh, to talk specifics about renovations if we need to, but that's sort of the gist of the of the request.
Thank you, Commissioner Kellin. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Shubs.
Um, so the the software ended up three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars less than expected. And the quote for the needed repairs is three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, like exactly? Pretty mu- I mean, well, three, three hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two thousand. So it's there's only a nine hundred and eighty-two dollar difference between our.
Yes, and it would seem like that was planned, but it wasn't. Um, it's just, uh, worked out that way. And really, these, um, these, these building renovations, this bid is really correcting some of the structural issues that we've identified, uh, over the time that we've been there with the brick itself, with, um, what's called brick tucking. Um, as you go through the building, you see a lot of, of original cedar beams that were purposely left there. We've identified structurally that there needs to be some securing of those beams. So it really comes down to a safety issue in the building. It's an investment that probably should have been made, uh, and there was conversations about it historically, well in advance of this administration. Um, but that's kind of water under the bridge at this point in time. It's just serendipity that we have the resources, the the bid for, uh, the software was, uh, you know, they looked at a Cadillac program in the beginning, but upon further review, they identified, you know what? This is just as good and it's 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 a lot less. So at some point in time, we started talking administration about, hey, you know, we know we've got this outline bid for some of these, you know, building restoration initiatives that fall outside of the original ARPA grant that we'd like to have considered.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Rutherford. Um, so the the sort of long identified issues in the HCS building were those already in a list of needed capital improvement requests from the department?
They have never been identified as a capital improvement request at any point in time. There was at some point in time, there was discussion between Plaza Corp. and the county in terms of who is responsible. We knew about these during the leasing of the building and we knew about it during the purchase of the building. So I'm just putting that out there.
Okay.
I I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but I am saying that these are, obviously, the building is over a hundred years old.
Sure.
We've got some structural things that we have to deal with. That's the cost of of a building that age.
So there was some discussion that I would assume about whose responsibility they were to remediate and those, whether they were the prior owner or our owners or us as owner in the purchase. And so we assumed that we would take on the maintenance responsibility. We we knew these existed, but they didn't come forward as a capital improvement.
No.
Item.
No.
How come?
Um, because I didn't really have, uh, at one point in time, we started to, uh, acquire this bid and this bid only became readily available probably in the last six months, um, in terms of getting it on paper and getting it calculated. So it was just not available. The bottom line wasn't available.
And then for administration, when when do the departments need to, they got this bu- you know, bid, we're in a budget process for next year. When would it be appropriate to add it to capital improvement list?
So yes, thanks for your question, Commissioner Strep. So I mean, typically, we do, uh, we hold, we host the, uh, the capital improvement meetings, you know, closer to the beginning of the year, and then we make that recommendation to the board and unfold it into the budget. Uh, we could always open that process back up, but it will, um, at this point, it would, uh, likely take away from other projects that were, uh, approved at this time. So, um, I would say with this, this project, I think, you know, just sort of reminding the board, and I know Health Officer Rutherford, uh, explained this as well. Um, if you recall, so during the, uh, property acquisition acquisition process, there were sort of this, this analysis that was that was done, right? That if we had, uh, kept the building, uh, status quo, uh, through the lease arrangement, we would have paid more in in lease payments than we would have in purchasing the property. Well, we also in 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 that regard, uh, you know, sort of inherited this, this, uh, I say this lease agreement that we were paying all this funding and there was no maintenance or anything baked into the lease payments. We were responsible for everything. So we already were under the arrangement by which we were paying a lease payment and we were responsible for all of the equipment and maintenance and failures. We were already doing that work anyway. Um, I think, you know, part of the issue too is that we've been working on a facilities master plan, so we did get those bits back, but that these processes just haven't aligned. So it would have been something that would have been caught and then programmed into capital improvement had we uh, had these processes aligned, but this is not the way it worked out for this particular building. So.
Follow up. The, I thought we had already allocated funding for tuck pointing of this building.
I I don't believe so. So.
The half a million dollars that was allocated, most of that is being allocated for securing the building. We recognize throughout COVID that there's a lot of vulnerable areas in the building. So we're, uh, we're addressing that. Um, there's a list of of items that are, are, you know, being um, completed with that half a million dollar grant. Again, uh, this is just a a new ask that is something that we've known has to happen sooner than later as it relates to the, again, the the secure, the safety of the building. So, um, you know, we thought that, you know, that the the amount available as a result of the reduced, uh, cost for the software potentially could be used for for this initiative.
I don't know if administrator, if you're able, the half a million dollar, um, allocation for renovations, um, do we have any description of what that was to the board at the time we made that allocation? Cause I know we're doing some renovation for some of the, um, reproductive health work that was occurring, uh, HCS, they did a remodeling of some building. I might be conflating different projects that we funded.
Planning, um, budget was actually a a state grant that we use for renovations for that exam room for the family planning program.
Okay.
And then the school-based health center is all the three quarters of a million dollars for that is all grant based as well. So we we do have a a pretty significant list of of work that's being done and we're probably at least half to maybe fifty to sixty percent, maybe further along the way with with the the that first five hundred thousand dollar grant.
Generally, I mean, the repairs need to be done to the building. Just a question for me, sort of out of what, uh, allocation? Whether it's in that capital improvement process, uh, or if the the board has other priorities for the ARPA resources that maybe would want to consider. So, um, but I, if if there is any description that can be uh, shared of that initial half million, uh, request to the board, um, cause I thought we were trying to address tuck pointing, but I maybe, um, we've had so many things come before us, but thank you for the questions. Take your questions.
Um, I appreciate the, uh, commissioner's line of questioning. Um, I think it was really what good put forward. Um, I, this is something that needs to be done. Um, I do have a problem with the process of it. Um, I just think that, you know, oh, it was a hundred and fifty, it's five hundred, let's put the three fifty. We've, we've got a lot of things that we could use ARPA money for. Um, but this is still something that needs to be done, whether it comes out of capital improvement or whether it comes out to ARPA. I I think by pulling this from consent to non-consent and having this discussion, I've made my point, I I at least I I feel like I have on it. I'm gonna vote for it. But I think in the future, as these new, um, ARPA dollars or opportunities come available, I think we need to have more discussion as the board of commissioners on it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, I agree with some of your comments. Um, for me, I'm gonna be voting no, um, because I feel like we were extremely generous during our process. There was a request from almost every department at the county and we funded those requests. So for me, for this to be so off, it just I'd like to see this come as a CIP request. It wasn't a priority then. So I don't think that we should reallocate the funding. We should put it back in the pot and then figure it out from there. But I'm sure if every department had the opportunity to submit a high quote and have money left over to reallocate for another project, they would have not saying that it was done intentionally. But I just, I I can't support this.
So Chair, thank you. Uh, to answer Commissioner Strep's question, so the original grant, uh, description that was that was in the packet. So it says, building renovations enhancements include enclosing specific hallways with bulletproof glass and card readers, replacing glass doors with solid doors, converting several rooms for HIPAA and confidentiality purposes to better accommodate customer services and converting two clinic rooms to exam rooms for expanded public health services. And so those were the, that was the original description of the five hundred thousand dollar award for renovation specific work.
Any other discussion, comments? All right, seeing none. Um, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazer.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
No.
Chair Ray. Commissioner Strabs.
No.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler. Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler. You have four yes.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Um, so next on the agenda, we have, or I'll entertain a motion to, uh, for a request for approval. to, uh, for a request for approval of an employment agreement between Kamala County Government and Lewis Smith for the position of Corporation Counsel and authorize the board chair to execute the agreement.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair, supported by Commissioner Strebs. Any discussion? All right, CNN, can you do a roll call vote for us, please, clerk?
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Chair Ray? Chair Ray? Commissioner Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler? Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler? Commissioner Mazer?
Yes.
Yes. You have seven yes.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number twenty twenty-four, A seventy-two. Um, I will entertain the motions requests for approval of and signature, that's the wrong one. Request for approval to amend opioid settlement funding allocation to Office of Community Corrections.
So moved.
All right, moved by Commissioner Strebs, supported by Commissioner DeLu. Any discussion? Commissioner Strebs?
Thank you, Chair Ray. So I see Director Bobo is here. I just have some. I have some questions. Don't be scared. Thank you, Director Bobo for taking my questions. So um, we have a, we made initial allocation um, for eighty-nine thousand dollars, part of the allocation, eighty-nine thousand three hundred for the enhanced drug testing. And that was to help cover the cost for folks participating in drug testing as a condition of their release. And uh, if those were cost burdens, some of this would help cover that. So this proposal reallocates a portion of those funds uh for some ongoing um remediation efforts. So I have just two questions. Can you tell me a little bit more about what the remediation will look like? And then two, is it because um the enhanced testing cost is lower than expected or um, you know, I, I just want to make sure that that money doesn't run out because we've made some initial mini grants that'll be available and I don't want to cut uh, funding for enhanced drug testing to support the uh treatment remediation. Maybe we can do both is the concern. So, thank you.
Or maybe we can do all three. I'll just apply for a mini grant and leave it as it is.
I want to make sure there's enough money.
Yeah, there is. Um, the proposal or the, the allocation of eighty-nine three for the enhanced drug testing was a lot. A lot, lot. It's not being utilized fully. I've been sitting on it for two years, building up my war chest, so to speak. And I can use it a lot better. Um, we've had, we being the sheriff, um, Logan Bishop in particular, the jail, because it's kind of like jail focused, jail and then out into the community focused. Um, and Lindsay O'Neil from ISK, who is the jail liaison for ISK. We've all talked about the mental health opioid co-occurring disorder issues. And the reallocation is to help with um remediation efforts, I guess, which is more like um community safe, what's the phrase I want? Harm reduction. There we go. Haven't learned that one well yet. Harm reduction. Uh, we did receive a Narcan machine through the, some type of Narcan fund through Wayne City University. We've stocked that with Narcan, with um safe sex kits from um HCS, um gun locks from HCS, um health and hygiene things, drug testing kits. So a lot of it will, not a lot, because we've only asked for like, I think eleven thousand for that for a year. We'll go towards that. We've identified some training or I've identified some training for the opioid, the rods, rapid opioid um screening test that we want to introduce into the jail because there's a gap. As the inmates come in and they're screened, there's this big gap to identify the opioids and other substance abuse issues and what do we do with them? So that's where that funding would go. There would be plenty of funding in the eighty-nine three to accomplish all of that. If that helps.
Yeah, and the rods would be administered by the ISK liaison for screening for the individuals or is a, is there a social work and worker in the jail that will be doing it or?
That's a much bigger ask. That's kind of like a part two.
So who, who do you envision we're gonna allocate funds for the rods? Who will administer it? We don't know yet.
We don't know yet. This is, this is like the very first baby step of, I had a proposal about a year ago.
Okay.
And it was ready to go to the board and then the task force started. So all the brakes were put on.
Okay.
So it's kind of there and this would, if that ever made it to the board and if it was approved, this would be the springboard into that.
So the allocation basically just purchase, purchases, the assessment tool?
The training. It gives the training for the people to be able to do opioid education, opioid training either in the jail at OCC, maybe over at DOC, at the drug court. It provides someone with that corrections-based knowledge and ability to communicate with that subset who are also co-occurring in SA involved in whether that's at OCC or in the jail or at a step down phase or with a clinician at eventuality, um, that's where we go. It's mostly in a community education role. Whether that comes from someone like Kendall, who's already doing it, helps her get a better base for jail delivery and jail population and pre-trial and post-conviction population. I, I guess, if you want me to put a name and a face to an idea, that would be it.
Good.
Not that it's going to be it, but it tends to help us put a person and their role to the vision. That would be the best I can do.
Thank you. I guess I should have asked you. I'm sorry I didn't start with you also, Lindy, before I brought Director Bobo up. So, but they answered my question. So thank you for taking it. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, CNN, do we need to do a roll call vote?
No.
No, Madam Chair, a motion will be good because this was originally for the consent.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. So our next, I will entertain a motion um, that the county accept a grant award from the city of Kalamazoo in the amount of one point two million to leverage funding to undertake the development of transitional and emergency housing within the city and that the chair is authorized to execute an agreement accepting the grant award on behalf of the county. Moved by Commissioner Morales, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler. Any discussion? All right, CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. And next item, I will entertain a motion um that the county administrative controller be authorized to negotiate the purchase of real property for county use. All right. Moved by Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler, supported by Commissioner Mazer. Discussion, Vice Chair?
I'll let Monty set her hand up first.
Okay, Commissioner Morales? Thank you for yielding, Vice Chair. Appreciate it. So um, excited. And I know it's gonna cost a pretty penny, but um, just as we just heard from um Jim Rutherford on his input on renovations that's happening to his building, I would um really echo that for folks that spend most of their time in this county building, treasurer's office, clerk's office or other spaces that we would be moving to, that they be in on this conversation. Um, because I've gotten feedback from those offices that under the last renovations, no input, squished spaces, I just, I think is respectful for, to have some input so that they can um efficiently work and serve our constituents to the highest level because we are extraordinary governance, right? Okay. So um, that would be my recommendation that their director heads or take a cer, I don't know, a survey or something. But that would be my recommendation moving forward so that their offices are equipped and they can function. Thank you.
Um, I share um some of the, the comments that um commissioner made, but I would maybe to, to take care of this, we could offer a, a friendly amendment that I move the county administrator controller be authorized to negotiate the purchase of real property and county use and negotiate and bring in with stakeholders um from affected county buildings.
All right, Maker took on the amendment and the secondary to our, any more discussion before we say too much?
Minister, you look like you've got something on your mind. I ain't got my glasses on. But you look like you've got something on your mind. May I, Chair?
No. No, 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 no. Any, any uh more questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Um, okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment time. This is a time when anyone may address the board on any topic. If you would like to address the board, please come to the podium. Please state your name and tell us where you're from. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Your time is displayed and once your three minutes are up, your time to speak has finished. It is time to provide input in a professional and respectful manner. Are there any members of the public who wish to make public comment at this time? I feel like John looks like he wants to say something. No, I'm joking. All right, no hands are online. All right, public comment time is closed. Item number thirteen, reports of officers, body administrative controller. Um, I do not have a report. Next time I'm gonna have one.
I'm gonna be brief.
All right.
I, I just want to be brief. There were a lot of um sort of articles or press in the paper about the reasons for um the changes or potential changes that are going on in the Office of Emergency Management. And I want to just put this out there. I have nothing but respect for Sheriff Rick Fuller. I think he has done a tremendous job and it has nothing to do with Sheriff Rick Fuller or his capacity or anything else. We are just trying to tweak communications issues. And, and if anybody is uh, wants a quote from me on that before they start writing off about how the board is upset with our sheriff, I would like to just let everybody know we are not upset with our sheriff. We are doing what we do always do in county government. Is always continuously try to make things better. So that is, that is my comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I agree with that.
I would concur.
Vice Chair Pro Tim?
I would concur with the, the statements just made and um, I think as we try to make always make improvements uh in our services to our citizens and our community, um, I think it's important to look at all of the issues and uh make sure that um we're doing our very best to do that. So I have no problems with our sheriff or our emergency management and our administration, but we want to review these things and make sure our services are appropriate for that department. We've had a lot going on this year uh as we're moving into our budget time and we're working to approve a budget and uh I think uh the work that our administrator and all of the folks in our office are doing a good job of bringing those things to light. I want to thank all of them and their hard work and getting that around and all the hard work of this board to review these things in a timely manner and uh make the appropriate decisions to fund the departments and provide services to our citizens. As I always do, I want everybody to think about those uh folks, our men, women uh that are out there serving us uh both abroad and locally. When you see them, thank them for their service, all of our police and fire and medical folks that are out there. Take a minute to thank them for their hard work and their dedicated service of our community. And many folks here in, that work for the county that are working uh to clean and keep our buildings safe and our health department working to keep our community safe. Uh, we do a lot of work with our in monitoring uh to keep potential harmful diseases and of the mosquitoes and the other stuff around. Uh, they're working hard to keep our restaurants inspected and serving uh, serving our citizens uh in appropriate manner. That, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pro Tim. Administrator Gatlin.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tim, commissioners, audience. Uh, you know, I, I want to certainly thank um you know, the staff for, for putting together this meeting and, and uh ensuring that everyone's prepared. I mean, tonight you've heard from a lot of uh folks, you've heard from the finance director, the chief deputy treasurer, the health officer, the, the medical um or the uh, wow, I can't, medical examiner. And so uh great presentations, a lot of information was presented. There's just a lot going on, you know, it's really hats off to HCS and, and all that they do there, they, they have a lot of programming, a lot of services. We have a, a really dedicated staff over there. Uh, some of them work behind the scenes and some of them are on the, you know, the front line. So uh, we appreciate the support from the community that we have for our staff in that regard uh for sure. Um, and we'll continue on uh in the uh, the coming months and the weeks uh on the budget and, and we'll get that all fine tuned and hopefully approved in, in October. So a few items to share. One is the annual MAC conference. Uh, I have Vice Chair Taylor scheduled uh for that. Everything should be taken care of, but if anyone else wanted to go, we need to know by the twenty-third, otherwise hotels will be uh taken up. So that's scheduled twenty, the September twenty-fourth uh through the twenty-sixth in Traverse City. So uh, please let us know ASAP. Wanted to provide two updates on the employee uh emergency assistance fund and then also what is now uh dubbed as undue medical debt, which was RIP medical debt formerly, formerly RIP medical debt, but on the EAF. I'm at the uh, we're working with uh a foundation, they're actually called the EAF, the Emergency Assistance Fund. And we've been meeting internally, uh, we held a qualifying events committee to determine what events would qualify an employee to leverage that funding or have access to emergency assistance funding that the board approved as part of an ARPA allocation. And um, that has uh morphed into some more complicated issues regarding what events would qualify versus just giving money to employees and giving money to employees would come with tax implications. So we're kind of working behind the scenes with Corporation Counsel, EAF and others to determine a different way to get that funding to employees without having those tax implications and the burden of that. Uh, so for example, if you just give an employee a thousand dollars, well, forty percent of that is subject to tax. So you only get six hundred dollars. So now they haven't, you know, reaped the benefits of receiving a thousand dollars, now they only get access to six hundred. So we're trying to figure out some ways that if someone doesn't qualify for a certain event, how do we still get them access to the money in a, in a way that doesn't burden, that doesn't create another burden essentially. So that work is ongoing. As we continue down that path, we will go back and do retroactive uh, we'll, we'll honor retroactive events as we know that this is taking time to implement. So uh, for example, right now we're looking at about a hundred and eighty days. So if, if we get some implemented, we'll retro it back to the beginning of the year essentially. So that everyone can still take part of that benefit if they had an event that qualified. Um, so we're working on that. I know Deputy Administrator Cole is working with uh some of the commissioners and the committee on that. So uh, just stay tuned for that. Um, and really what we're kind of probably looking at is something akin to like our HSA program. So that's our health uh savings account where the county can dump money into that and then act, and then employees have access to that. So we're looking at some options for, for that and, and it's just taking some time to do the research and and uh sort of the homework we need to do to, to make sure we can do what we intend to do uh at the desire of the board. Update on undue medical debt. So formerly RIP medical debt, that one is also extremely complicated and uh part of it is because we are leveraging funding from the state that was allocated through the state's budget. Well, RIP medical debt shifted um kind of gears in such a way and they, they've rebranded. Now they're under a different name and they still don't have a state contract. Our outside legal counsel has obtained an ARPA-specific uh contract to leverage that funding from the state and partner with undue medical debt. So they have that and they're reviewing uh sort of the terms and conditions. However, outside legal counsel still does not feel comfortable moving forward um with an agreement. with an agreement with undue medical debt until the state's contract is in place, which in their opinion makes the most sense that we know that the state funding is there and that their contract with the state is there so that we can leverage all that funding together. Nonetheless, they're still working on the ARPA agreement between undue medical debt and the county. And once we have that in place, we just need to wait till the, the state portions gets, it's executed rather. So, we're waiting on that, but that work is ongoing. So, we'll, we'll kind of continue in that vein. I wanted to remind the board in between this meeting and the next, because after the next meeting, it'll be September seventh. So, Saturday, September seventh, we have the, the Charles A. Pratt Justice Center dedication ceremony at ten AM. And so, we were able to secure a keynote speaker and by we, I mean Chief Judge Jagir. The surrogate, of the Ninth Circuit Court was able to secure the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court from Michigan, Elizabeth T. Clement. And so, she'll be delivering the keynote speech that, that morning. And so, that's extremely exciting and very grateful to Chief Judge Jagir for securing her participation. And then I would say, lastly, we are pleased to announce that we have extended a conditional offer of employment to a DEI director. And they will hopefully start September ninth. And so, we're excited about that. You know, we went through about, interviewed roughly, well, eight, seven finalists, we had eight finalists, but received twenty-four applications. So, very qualified candidate and we're excited to get them on board September ninth. So, that's all I have this evening and willing to entertain any questions. So, please.
Thank you, Chair. With undue medical debt, have they articulated where they are at in their contracting process with the state? Do we have a sense on what the barriers or what the timeline looks like?
No, that's a great question, Commissioner Shrebs. So, outside legal counsel said they've inquired about that and they've been rather evasive in answering that question. So, he's not sure where they are with it. He just knows that there's no contract between the state and undue medical debt. And that could be for a myriad of reasons, but he does find it peculiar that they don't have a contract yet with the state when the funding is there in the state budget. So, and there were a lot of other, I think there were five other counties that had funding for that within the state budget. And I forgot, I do actually have one more thing. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Shrebs? Okay, so, so the last thing that I wanted, I forgot to address, thank goodness I have staff that remind me. So, we have, I sent out an email about the partnership between the Kalamazoo Community Foundation and the county for the opioid kind of application process. And so, we needed to go over some of those details and garner some feedback and answers on that so that way we can, Lyndy can move forward, our Deputy Administrator Smith can move forward with the Community Foundation. Would you like to take that? Okay, thank you.
Yes, I will. Thank you. So, we did email out the application packet, which included just that process overview, the timeline, the application, and their scoring rubric. The board had indicated, I'd like to see that before it launches. And so, I'm just looking for any feedback that you may have. Thumbs up if you're good with it, any feedback if not, that you maybe want to see something tweaked, we can go back to them and have that tweaked. We are aiming at this point in time for that grant application to launch next Wednesday, August twenty-eighth. It would be open for three weeks and then that scoring and review process, which at that point in time, we have discussed adding some members to that Community Impact Committee, which they're open to. We just need to identify who that is. But if we carry on with this timeline, then those award notifications would be going out October fourteenth. And those contracts would be executed sometime after that and funding out the door, hopefully by end of November, the very latest. So, tonight, all I'm looking for is if there's any feedback regarding that process, timeline, application, or that scoring rubric that was provided to y'all.
So sorry, Chair Ray, I'm so sorry. So, the, the one piece of feedback, there's some geographical information requested in the grant application, asking to break down by percentage, what zip code or township the people they provide services to are. And I'm just wondering, so thirty thousand dollar maximum grant allocation, if that is a little bit of an administrative burden for some of the community-based organizations that might come forward and apply. It's already stipulated within the grant that must, a hundred percent must go to people within Kalamazoo County. And I'm wondering if it's really necessary for us to know what percentage are in K Township and Portage and Waukesha. Or if we can eliminate that from the grant with the assertion serving people within the county, or if we think there's value to it. So, that's my.
Yes, and I could actually clarify that. So, the version that y'all got was kind of that word document version. It's not what it will look like online per se. So, online what that question looks like, it is an optional question, I believe. And we just asked, so the question reads, following question will help us better understand how our grants are impacting and supporting the Kalamazoo community. Your response to these questions will not impact the likelihood of receiving funding from the Kalamazoo Community Foundation. Do you collect clientele or participant data by city, township, village, or zip code? And then your option is, option A, city, township, village, option B, zip code. And then the third, we do not currently collect clientele participant data. Please tell us more if you answer that question. And so, I assume if you click cities, then there's that dropdown that occurs and then you select what city. So, it's purely a way to garner, I think, some informational data. Not only that would be good, I would assume, for the foundation, but for us too, as we continue to evaluate all of our programs and services. How should we be doing that? Is that by zip code? Is it by township? And that's truly what that question is getting at.
Thank you. With it being optional, then I don't have concern that if it doesn't impact their ability to, to score funding. So, thank you.
And then I will confirm that it's optional right now. I said that and then I do see that there's a little red star. It looks like you do have to answer it, but one of those answers is, we do not currently collect. I can also ask that they can just add, we prefer to not respond. So, I can ask that question as well if you'd like that. Or if you want me to just have.
If they have the option to say no, I just want to clarify that that won't impede their ability to seek funding. If they don't collect that data, thank you.
Any other questions? To that point, I think that's a really good question. And it kind of aligns with, like, it would allow us the data necessary to see if there, if the people where the overdoses are happening are being impacted by the funding. So, maybe if that could be like on the reporting side as opposed to on the application and just giving them a heads up that we're looking for that data so that they collect it. I did have some notes, but I don't have them. But I know one was about the requirement of being a five oh one two three. It did say they could have a physical sponsor, but my question is for like the smaller groups like the Alano Club. What does that look like as far as a physical sponsor? Do we have to have that as a requirement? Are there any others with questions or discussion? I got some more, but I'll email my little paper tomorrow. All right. You done, Kevin? Commissioner Jelul?
I actually just want to apologize to my board members for being an hour late for the first meeting tonight. Because of my day job, I was right next door at the Pratt Justice Center and sometimes the wheels of justice turn very slowly. It was very uncommon for me to have to go to court, but I did and I'm sorry for that and it might happen again. Thank you.
Commissioner Mazur.
I just want to thank Pastor David from Calvary Bible for joining us tonight for the invocation. Thank you.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. Echoing Vice Chair. I'm good with the sheriff. Actually, me and Protem have a meeting coming up to see what we could do to better and rectify this situation so that we can move forward. So, yeah, press if you got a question and just come ask us. Yeah. Ask John. Shoot. Oh. We won't be here next week. The kiddos are starting school next week. So, good luck, have a good school year, reach out. And I was saddened, I was out of the country last week to see that we had another victim to gun violence. And, yeah, I, I'm hoping that we can continue to push funds into these organizations and just do better. I was in a fireside conversation with Congresswoman Slaken yesterday. And, excuse me, she was a part of that ruling that happened on the other side of the state where the parents were charged with the responsibility of their son, you know. I think, you know, in some instances, that's harsh and it's just like we need some real, real community connections and some outreach going on for, for children to be shot in the head twice. Like, it's, it was very disheartening to come back home and hear that. Not that any one death is bigger than the other, but my hope is that we have a safe school year all across the board. I was happy to see the WMed's report and I feel like they have been an extremely great addition to our area, especially with their wraparound programming for high school students that are looking to go into the medical field and actually providing those hands-on services specifically to communities of color that may not have that opportunity in any other instance. My son was one of those and he is getting ready to head on to nursing school. So, big up to WMed for investing in our community, specifically those that come from disenfranchised environments. So, thank you all for what you do. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Morales. I can't talk, like, I'm ready to go to bed. But also just to your point, thank you for lifting up the incident of gun violence and just a quick update. The thirteen-year-old was shot twice in the head, but his condition has been updated to critical but stable and he's expected to live. So, just keep him and his family in your prayers. Commissioners.
Yeah, lots of prayers for him. Be a long road to recovery for that young person. I was gonna lift up and celebrate briefly. I got to attend one of my favorite events of the year and Commissioner Mazur was there as well, but the annual centenarian celebration where we get to have lunch with community members who are a hundred and over. And just to celebrate and honor our elders, you know, in the community, I'll just lift up, I met Emma, a hundred and one, who attends the garden at the Equi Medical Senior, Senior Center. And Dorothy, who is a hundred and one, still living in her own apartment and walking, shaking her hands around and telling me she just really loved a good time. And that's the key to living a long life, but don't drink, she also told me. And then, and, and also Hope, who was a hundred and four, still with us in our community. So, you know, understanding the value of community members all across the generations and that our elders bring wisdom that the energy of the youth can learn from. And that joy is what sort of gives us hope for the future, as we say, right? So, thank you to Deputy Administrator for all your work on opioids and Director Bobo for taking my questions tonight. The task force continues to advance our work. We're still moving through our process and looking forward to making it through the next few questions to hopefully wrap up recommendations, maybe in October, that will come back here to the Board of Commissioners for ongoing planning and allocation. And then, you know, we're, we're continuing to have dialogue in the community and with administration about ways that we use county authority to ensure that we have stable, healthy housing for people in this community. Nobody should live in conditions that are unsanitary or unsafe. And so, as we begin to, you know, see the housing crisis stabilize and our investments pay off, we need to continue to recognize that everybody deserves a place that's safe enough to live, whether that be violence, disease, infestation, et cetera. And otherwise, this community won't tolerate conditions that are below that standard and will fight to make sure that we lift everybody up. Thank you.